The planning board, the date today is March 18th, 2021. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Rick?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
I gotta do roll call now. Mark, uh, we have to new ruling for the roll call stuff, okay? With that, gentlemen, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read the minutes from, we have two months minutes. One is from February 18th, 2021. And the other one was from October 22nd, 2020. I don't know if you mo- gentlemen had opportunity to read them?
Yes, I have.
I have, I would motion that we approve Ezra.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I.
I roll call, so I, Rick?
I.
Brian?
I.
I have to do this new roll call thing, I apologize, gentlemen. Uh, is there anything else? I'm trying to think of here, I had the mail. It wasn't too much on the mail. Did you get the last two packages that I gave you, gentlemen? Did you get those okay? Our first meeting will be at 6:45, we have a public hearing, I cannot open it up until then. Is there anything else? We got four or five minutes. Let me see, is Pat out there?
I think that's a great idea.
Guess not. Let me see what we have for mail.
Pat's turning now.
Excuse me?
Uh, it looks like Pat's connecting now.
We're gonna have Pat at the end of the meeting, but if he can hook in now, we can Basically, what it is, is we have to do a discussion on EPA stormwater, and it has to be in in the mechanism done by June 30th, 2021. But Pat can tell us a little more about that once he gets in. I believe he's here. You in, Pat?
Yep, I'm in.
Okay. We'll get you early, we've got a few minutes here, so it won't take too long to discuss this, another five minutes or so?
Five minutes is excellent.
Go for it, you got the floor.
So, for the MS4 updates for, by June 30th, the Stormwater Review Commission, being the department heads and others that form of that commission, need to update the stormwater regulation that's tied to the stormwater review boards bylaw. And that just requires a seven day advertisement. We don't have to actually run the revision to the ad for the language in the ad. Needs to be a public meeting with a public hearing. Seven days advance notice. And after you, after you vote on the revisions to the regulation, it'll become effective in 14 days. So, it has to be done under a meeting held by the Stormwater Review Board, you folks. The planning board is the review board. And then the committee, being Merrily and Joe and the others, will recommend the revisions to the regulation to you folks. And that's it. So it's pretty simple, I can put all of that together. If you could pick a date in April to meet as the Stormwater Review Board, we could have this done for June 30th, and we won't wind up with a $25,000 to $100,000 penalty from EPA.
That would be nice.
It would be very.
Now, you said on this, we only have to have one seven day?
Correct.
In the paper, we don't have to do it for two weeks?
No.
Just one week?
Yep.
Uh, guys, well, I got you, we can have just one special meeting for that, correct? Be a quick in and out Zoom meeting?
Wouldn't even be a half an hour.
Okay. Guys, you got any, well, if we put it together, we have to have it in the paper to Friday before the ad. So that would have to be the 2nd of April. We could squeeze that meeting in, that the 2nd of April would not give us a meeting till, it won't be in the paper till the 8th. So we would have to have it the 15th. I think if we do it on the 15th, we can do it just for this for half an hour. And then have our next meeting, a regular planning board meeting on the 22nd.
And I can, I can circulate the draft regulation from Merrily to you folks in advance of the meeting, and everybody should be all set.
Great, is there a motion?
Motion to have a move for revision of the stormwater regulations required by the EPA on April 15th, at what, 6:30 mark?
That's right.
At 6:30.
Is there a second? Brian, second, all in favor? Brian, Rick, yep, Mark, I, unanimous, we'll do that. Pat, it's in your hands, you can set this all up.
Okay.
We'll go from there, just please remind me tomorrow, and I can get a hold of Jen, Jen, you out there?
Can you hear me?
Yep, okay. Set that up, you can get all the verbiage from Pat, is that okay, Pat?
Yep, I'll coordinate that with Jen.
Okay. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Thank you, get you in and out, Pat, sorry, you wouldn't have to wait till the end of the meeting, thank you very much.
I'm sorry too. I'm sorry too.
Thank you for that, we sure appreciate it.
All right.
Moving right along, what do we have here for time, 6:42, I need two more minutes.
Uh, let me go through. Are with these stormwater regulations and this review process setup, are we gonna have some money available to hire outside here review?
That's, this is a lot that has to be done, I'm sure the selectmen have some money hidden in there somewhere.
Actually, peer, peer review of the regulation?
Well, no, not of the regulations, but the, of the applications that we're going to get relative to the regulation.
Yeah, the cost of peer review was borne by the applicant, it's in the regulation.
Sounds good.
Right. I had the mail here a minute ago. Okay, mail, sorry about that, we got a couple of minutes. Nothing specific. Town of Appeal, Board of Appeals, Rochester. Rochester Zoom meeting, Matt of Poise. Oh, city of New Bedford. Hope we're pretty well set with that, we got one more minute. So those two meetings will be good for Rick and Brian, we have one on the 15th of April, and we'll have the regular one on the 22nd. Okay, being 6:45. Notice is here by given the Decedent Planning Commission will meet at 6:30 on March 18th, 2021, to hear the following applications. Site plan review, 158 Main, 166 Main, 17 Wing Road. At 6:45 PM, the ethical proposed by Delta Realty LLC, site owner and New England Retail Development LLC, proposed site operations for site plan review concerning property at 158, 166 Main Street and 17 Wing Road. This proposal is for 39,900 square foot gas station and convenience store within the Business Village District. Is there anybody out there for New England Retail?
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
This is Phil Lombardo, representing the applicant. With me tonight are Frank Montero and Heather Montecup from Greenman Peterson Engineers. Frank is the civil engineer on the job, and Heather is our traffic engineer. And I, I think maybe what I'd like to do is very briefly take us up to speed on what, what we're doing, which is an application for a convenience store, a gasoline station at the address that you noted. And we had filed for site plan review quite a while ago, seeking approval of a roughly 4,500 square foot, excuse me, 4,200 square foot building. After the planning board meeting, I think it was last month, early last month, the applicant agreed that we would refile a, a new application, which we did. And our original application sought approval of a 3,995 square foot building. Through further discussions, we have yet again reduced the square footage of that building. So the plan set that was submitted to you last month, and reviewed by the peer reviewer, was slightly modified, I guess I'll say to the good, which is the building square footage was reduced. We did then submit a revised site plan to the board last week. We also sent the revised site plan to the peer review people. We, we haven't heard anything different from them in terms of negative, in terms of the, the change to the plan. So I, I guess what I'd like to do is, is ask Frank Montero to bribe the changes, maybe to make it crystal clear, the changes from the 4,200 down to the 39, and then to the 3,600. And show you the, the site plan and the building elevations. And then perhaps after that, we can discuss the peer review comments that we received from SW Cole.
Sounds great for me.
Mr. Chairman, Frank Montero, I'm gonna try to share my screen here, if I can do this. Can I see that, okay?
Not yet.
Not yet, I gotta for share.
There we go, it's coming.
All right, thank you, Phil, as the chairman, as, as Phil mentioned, there's been several renditions of plans, so I'm gonna just try to chronologically go through what's occurred. So, at our last meeting on February 18th, we actually withdrew our original application, which had a 4,285 square foot convenience store in this area here, this is the current plan we're looking at right now. But, but the original plan that we withdrew had a 4,285 square foot C store here, with a drive-through lane that came around the, the side of the building, and exited out onto Main Street with another curb cut. That was withdrawn on February 18th, the board accepted that withdrawal. And we submitted a new application, new set of plans with the plan board, actually on February 4th. And, and that plan had a smaller building, at that time it was 3,995 square feet. But the drive-through was, was deleted on that, that current version that was advertised. And the board actually accepted that application at that last meeting on February 18th. And, and scheduled the public hearing for tonight. As Phil mentioned, we further reduced the size of the convenience store to 3,600 square feet, yeah, which is what you're looking at on the screen now. And those plans were, were delivered to the town on March 9th. And that was really the only change on the version of the plans that we're gonna look at tonight, was the buildings a little bit smaller. So I'm gonna just go through this site plan quickly, just kinda, I know we've done this a few times, but just for the record, as I mentioned, the 3,600 square foot store is, is here. You can see my pointer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we've got a loading zone located on this side of the building to the east. We've got an overhead canopy that's been the same size through the various renditions. There's a total of five dispensers under this canopy that can fuel eight vehicles at one time, this, there's two on this island out here, one's a diesel and one's gasoline. So you can have eight vehicles fueling maximum capacity. We've got 25 parking spaces shown on the site. There's some here in front of the building for customer friendly parking. Some additional parking out here for overflow and employees, as well as some parking to the rear in this area. We only need 18 spaces to comply with zoning, and we're using 24, proposing 24. The site access has changed from the original development, as I mentioned, we originally had a drive-through exiting here, that curb cut's been removed from the project. We have the full access curb cut proposed on Main Street, this location, a right-in only located here. And another full access curb cut on Wing Road. The fuel tanker deliveries, the underground fuel tanks are located, proposed to be located right here under the pavement. So fuel tanker deliveries would, would enter the site through this right-in driveway, which is why this is critical to the development. The truck would pull in and, and offload in this area here. Fill up the tanks, and then exit around the canopy in this fashion, and go back out the full access driveway. Some other site features, we, we have a trash enclosure, closure located this back corner of the site here. A vacuum air island located at this location. Some of the other changes on landscaping, you know, we've started with a substantial landscape plan that the board seen previously. Some street trees on our Wing Road. Shrub bed out at the corner, we've got a free standing sign here with the shrub bed driveways highlighted with some shrubs. Some of the things we've added is this, this hedgerow along this, this edge of the convenience store facing Main Street. That was added to soften the view from, from Main Street. And we've added a abreviated hedge all around the, the side and rear of the property here, adjacent to basically the residential use for the butter. So in a nutshell, the, the, the changes that have kind of taken place over the past few months have reduced the impervious area quite a bit on the project from what we started. We originally had about a 60% impervious coverage on the lot. This plan has it at 55.9%. The existing site's at 66.5%, as you all know, it's pretty well paved. And zoning actually allows 90%, so we're, we're well under the zoning limitations. We've also added sight lights to this plan, illuminating the driveways here and here, there's this light pole here illuminating the parking and the fuel tanks. Another light pole here illuminating this back parking area in the driveway. We've removed any lighting in, in this area here, the only lighting behind the building is some safety lighting to these two rear doors. And light on this side to illuminate the loading area. We have details for the lining, the fixtures are all dark sky compliant, energy efficient LED fixtures. I think the light poles are 15 feet high, we've lowered them, we usually use a 20-foot high pole. We're using a 15-foot pole here, we usually put them on a 30-inch concrete base, we've reduced that to a 6-inch base here. Again, to, to, to recognize the, the neighborhood and realize we, we want to minimize that potential effect. Just quickly on drainage, I'm gonna flip to another drawing here. A drainage design, which, which has been peer reviewed by the towns consultant SW Cole. In a nutshell, the existing site is all sheet flow off into basically Main Street. There's no stormwater treatment, there's no stormwater controls, we basically have sheet flow into the street. So what we're proposing here is a much improved system, with entire site being curved, with a series of catch basins around the site. Here, here, there's one in this corner, there's one behind the building. There's a couple of slotted drains across the driveway. Everything is collected on-site, and come down to this point, runs through a 250 gallon oil water separator. Full, we connect into the existing stormwater system in the corner here. Terms of groundwater recharge, we're adding groundwater recharge with the site doesn't currently enjoy, we have an underground infiltration system here under the pavement, which is picking up the, the back of the store here, the, the lawn area, as well as the roof from the convenience store and the roof from the canopy. So the overall net, net change is, is actually a benefit to the site, would decrease in the rate of, rate of runoff and the volume runoff compared to the existing conditions for all year storms up to the 100-year storm. Some other utilities we have, just to touch on those, this nice utility sheet, and these are all in the site, site plans that we submitted. All the new utilities are connected on Main Street on this side of the building. There's an overhead line running from, for electric, there's an overhead line running from this pole across the street to a new pole that'll be installed here. Then we're gonna run underground all the way through this, this landscaped area to a transformer pad located in this back corner, then underground to the back of the convenience store. We have a new water service coming in the back of the store here, running up to Main Street, connected to the water main. The sewer comes out the end of the building here, there's a grease trap for the proposed kitchen use in the store, sanitary discharge, which connects to the existing sewer line in this location. And then there's a new natural gas connection here, which ties into an existing service on the site. That's, that's about it on the utility side, I've got some, I submitted some building elevations with the site plan, this is a colored version of the elevations, they, they, they haven't changed much since you seen them originally, the, the building's just smaller. Again, we're using all brick exterior, ear white trim, granite sills on the windows, this, this coining details on the corners of the building, and, and we did actually add some some additional treatments to the side of the buildings, some kind of false windows and some granite sills here, to kind of jazz up that side a little bit facing Main Street. This shows the coining on the, the corners a little bit better. Again, the roofs, they're all architectural shingles, peaked roofs. A flat roof is proposed on the project, as well as the canopy, the gas canopies, same thing, got peaked roofs and architectural shingles to match the building. We did show the board some 3D renderings back when we started the project, these are the same renderings, kind of a foreign after shots, this is a view from Main Street, existing conditions obviously with, with the curb cuts is actually three, three of three curb cuts on Main Street here, quite wide. Plus the old gas canopy garage. This is a rendering of the proposed development with the right-in driveway here, full access driveway here. This is an old, the, the original rendering we showed you, so this actually still shows the drive-through exit here, but that, that's gonna go away under the current plan. So this obviously is a, is a significant upgrade architecturally, as, as far as what you'll see from the street. Similarly, on Wing Road, this is a view of the existing conditions from the proposed driveway location. This is a rendering on the same location, showing the new full access driveway canopy, you can see the, the fueling locations a little bit better here. Dispensers and eight vehicles that could potentially fuel here at maximum capacity, these are the underground tanks that I mentioned on this side, parking air and vacuum unit here. This still shows the, what was a drive-through, but this, this is basically a loading zone now, which stops and doesn't go on the building. That's about the site layout in, in architectural piece, we did receive peer review letter from, from SW Cole, as I mentioned, on March 2nd. We sent back a response to that on March 15th with a two minor revisions I could go through if you'd like at some point. But that's basically the project, I, I have Heather Monica up with us as well, she's our traffic consultant. As the chairman, if you like, she could give you a brief overview of what she's done on the traffic side.
If you would, please.
Great, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. So for the record, Heather Monica with Greenman Peterson, traffic engineers for the proposed project. We did prepare a trip generation inside access letter, a few versions of this letter were submitted with the different plan revisions. However, the latest letter is dated February 2nd, 2021. In that letter, we talk about, you know, the existing site proposed conditions, everything that Frank went over. The latest letter does show the 3,995 square foot convenience store, but it did remove the drive-through from it. And as Frank previously mentioned, the building is now 3,600 square feet. The curb cuts today, there's three on Main Street, and we're reducing that to two because we have two for the facility today, plus one residential driveway. And then on Wing Road, there's two driveways, one for the commercial development and one for the residential that we're reducing down to one, so there is a reduction in curb cuts with this redevelopment. It also cuts down the, the width of the wide open curb cuts, and, and pulls them further away from the intersection, which we feel is an improvement. We looked at collisions, we looked at site distances, that's all in the letter. Another thing that we looked at was trip generation. And a site like this actually doesn't generate a whole lot of new trips to the area, more than half of the trips are pass-by trips. So people that are already on the roadway, driving by on the site, they, they pull from existing traffic on the site. So this kind of site doesn't generate a lot of new traffic, we did do traffic counts in November 2020 at the intersection of Main Street and Wing Road, those were submitted with our letter. And basically, when we take the new traffic that's coming to the site, and we split it on all the roadways, north and south on Main Street, out on Wing Road, increases in traffic are anywhere between nine to 28 vehicle trips per hour, so that's about one new vehicle trip every two to six and a half minutes, depending on what road you're on. So these additional increases represent less than 10% increase in traffic on the area roadways. And they're expected to have minimal impact on the adjacent roadways and intersections. But what I also wanted-
I lost you. We lost Heather.
Yeah, she's, um, she's out of the country, so she's, she's calling in on her cell phone and trying to manage the Zoom calls, so I think she got disconnected. We could give her a minute, please.
We can wait till she gets back on, but it's, here we go.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, my, my phone just- I'm sorry, my phone just ended on me, I apologize. If I cut out, I'll call back in. So what I wanted to talk about today is the, based on our discussions with the town. We are, they are very interested in a crosswalk at the intersection of Main Street and Wing Road. So we did an investigation of that and we submitted a pedestrian crosswalk evaluation dated February 3rd, 2021. And that was submitted with the package on February 4th and on plan.
Jesus Christ, anything else go wrong?
Can.
You're gonna have to try your phone again. Sorry about that. We did a trial run and the computer wasn't working, so I decided to use their cell.
Frank, do you have, I see you have something called crosswalk location?
Yeah, Heather's gonna go over that if we can get her back.
Maybe we can just put that up, so. Is that the correct one, Frank?
Yeah.
We had received some feedback on that.
Yeah, so Heather will discuss this, hopefully she comes back and finishes the study. But she was going to address the proposed crosswalk that was suggesting. And she's going to address the, we have a letter from the police department back in May of 2020. Discussing crosswalks, so she was going to address that as well.
If you want, I have a letter from the police chief dated March 15th, 2021. If you'd like me to read that while Heather's trying to get back in.
Oh yeah, that'd be great.
I'm the police chief, dear board members. I am writing you in regard to the commercial development of property located on 158 166 Main Street, 17 Wing Road. Specifically, I wanted to address the pedestrian crosswalk evaluation dated February 3, 2021. That was prepared by Greenman Peterson. Sometime ago, I was part of the initial discussion regarding pedestrian traffic in the area. That included a crosswalk along Wing Road at the intersection of Main Street. Because of the distance crosswalk would traverse, the idea of pedestrian island near the midpoint was suggested. The developer of the property was open to this suggestion. However, based on GPI's recent evaluation, I have to agree with the concept of the pedestrian refuge island in the middle of Wing Road. Is no longer a feasible option. That being said, the proposed business on the property stands to generate significant pedestrian traffic in the area. GPI's evaluation calls for a single crosswalk across Main Street, just north of the intersection of Wing Road. While I agree that this is a good location for a crosswalk. I believe this should still be an additional crosswalk with appropriate signage. Constructed across Wing Road, along the gutter line on the Main Street. Just because the pedestrian island is not feasible, we should not ignore pedestrian safety and abandon the idea of the crosswalk there. Respectfully, Christopher Richmond, Chief of Police.
Do you hear us? Can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
I'm clear.
So I understand, I did get a letter from the police chief that talked about showing the two crosswalk locations. I came in halfway through, must have been a new letter after he looked at our evaluation. Is that correct? That what you were just talking about?
That is correct.
Okay, so I was just going to go through our evaluation if that's okay. And so we had first evaluated a crosswalk across Wing Road. You know, just as a pedestrian would want to walk exactly where Frank is showing you right now. The crossing is over 100 feet with the angle of Wing Road. There is no, you wouldn't be able to provide a pedestrian refuge island in the middle and still accommodate because of the angle of the roadway. Emergency vehicle, bus traffic in and out of it. And we just feel that that one, like greater than 100 feet to cross in that area would be pretty difficult for pedestrians. We did note, as you just said in the end of the letter, that if a pedestrian crossing was to go there, it would have to be on the gutter line. But the view of the pedestrians would be tight as you approach the cemetery, so walking south. As you can tell, when cars are driving northbound on Main Street, they don't have to slow down as much to make that right turn onto Wing Road. So they, so you know, we're just concerned about speed, site distance, things like that. So that was the alternative one that we looked at. The next alternative was up Wing Road, so closer to the Wing Road site driveway of our site. And because of the speeds of the roadway, we got speeds out there on Wing Road. The crosswalk would have to be 245 feet up Wing Road in order to meet the proper stopping site distance for a vehicle traveling on the road. And we just didn't feel that pedestrians who are walking down Main Street would walk down Main Street and almost 250 feet up Wing Road and then cross. In addition, pedestrians, I'm sorry, drivers are more aware of what's going on at intersections. So mid block crossings aren't always the greatest. They work, they definitely do work, but you know, it's safer to have a crossing at an intersection where motorists are aware of possible conflict. So that was alternative two that we looked at. And alternative three is shown on the plan in front of you today, which is a crosswalk across Main Street. It connects the proposed sidewalk that will be rebuilding on our site, along with the sidewalk that's already there on the west side of Main Street. It lessens the crossing so that they're not driving, so that they're not crossing as much. It's only about 33 feet. And it does keep the pedestrians in their same general path of travel. Main Street speeds are about 40 to 41 miles per hour of 86 percentile speeds. So we can accommodate the stopping site distance required at that location. And obviously, we would put up the proper signage. So if the project is approved and this crosswalk is something that the town would like to see. We would work with the DPW, the highway department, who's responsible for maintenance and repair of roadways and street signs and traffic markings within the town. To make sure that the crosswalk met what the town wanted. I'm just hearing the second letter from the chief now about they would like to look into another crosswalk as we were talking about in our alternative one as well. We can investigate that more and we're more than happy to work with the town and the police chief and the DPW on that. It just wasn't our first choice for a crosswalk location for the reasons that I had just described.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else before we turn this over to the gentleman on the planning board? The way we're going to do this is the gentleman on the planning board will ask questions if they have any, and then we will turn it to the public.
Yeah, I think that completes our presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on the board?
I have a couple of comments. I don't know. You know, I understand that there's not much new traffic, no new traffic generated. I mean, it is a convenience store. It primarily is going to be local people going to and from work. But one thing it will increase dramatically is the number of in and outs onto Main Street from this convenience store. I mean, right now, the facility that's there generates very little traffic. So there's very little, there's very little, very few conflicts that happen, particularly during the busy time of the day, both in the morning and in the evening. I'm still a little concerned that because of the speed of the traffic that goes through there and the traffic. Again, during normal commuter hours, which is going to be a prime time for people to duck in and out of the store. Get their cigarettes and their scratch tickets and get coffee and gas and all that stuff. I'm concerned that there may not be, well, there probably will be adequate gaps, but there certainly will be a lot less, there will be a lot less gaps available. And you know, as the gaps get smaller and the gaps get less, people get more and more, I'll say bold with their entrances and exits. I do have a little concern about that. Also, I mean, you did traffic count in November. Now, because of COVID, traffic's down considerably. I was also wondering if there was a, some kind of a factor that increased that amount of traffic. Again, slanted towards the available gaps on Main Street for people to come in and out of this place. And thirdly, there's a pretty significant mature arborvitae hedge along the north side of the property right now. Adjacent to map 13 and a pretty decent sized tree. I was wondering what the, what the plan was relative to those. I mean, it seems like that existing arborvitae hedge is a pretty significant and substantial buffer between this development and the residential. The residential property on what, 36 map 13. That's my three comments. Heather, you want to?
Yeah, maybe we respond to, perhaps Heather can respond to the traffic questions and Frank can respond to the landscape question.
Good.
Yeah, so you are correct that there will be more, there will be more traffic coming in and out of the site today than there was before. As part of, we did not do a gap study out there. I don't know if that is something that the board is going to require as of this meeting, if that's going to be a request that you make. So I can't tell you off the top of my head the amount of gaps that are there today, if it's adequate. But, and we did not do analysis on the driveways. So I guess that's what, I guess I would want a little bit more direction on what you would like to see to prove out your concern. Because there's a number of things we could do. And maybe a gap study is one of them to show, you know, what are the gaps today? And how many gaps do we need to get our traffic into and out of the site?
Well, I guess, number one, I would ask if it's prudent to just use the traffic counts per se in November. I mean, we do have a lot less traffic on most of the roadways than the Commonwealth, probably the US because of the COVID situation. Is there some kind of, there must be some kind of monitoring station that would let you figure in basically an increase in traffic for what I hope will be normal conditions towards the end of the year.
Right, there was, there is a mass DOT count station to the south that we compared the counts to, and they were similar.
Okay, okay. I, from my own view, I certainly would like to see a gap study. Again, I know it's very busy there, you know, during the commuter hours in the morning and in the evening. And there will be, there will be some interesting traffic situations, I believe, during those times. As people are rushing to get home or rushing to get to work and trying to navigate the traffic on Main Street as it sits. I would feel more comfortable if that were looked at a little more closely.
Understood, yeah. We've done, we've done traffic studies for a lot of gas stations in our, in my career anyway. And yeah, the volume of traffic on this roadway is lower than a lot of other traffic studies that we've worked on. But I can completely understand your concern and that is data that we can absolutely get as long as we can, you know, as long as we talk to the client and he approves it. So something that we can definitely look into.
That would be up to the rest of the board, you know, if that's something that the whole board wants to see. Ken, this is Phil, Heather, while we still have you. Just, can I just ask, I mean, you mentioned a little bit of something about your professional judgment. I mean, I guess I would ask what you would expect to find here with the vehicle trip increase is not significant. You were talking a minute ago about, you know, one or two vehicles admitted or something. And I guess I'm wondering what you think you're going to find that might be different from what you expect.
So normally, although cars may, during peak periods, as Ezra had mentioned. Might have, you know, there's more traffic during peak periods for sure, right? When cars are driving past the driveways and whatnot coming to, you know, in the morning to work and the home from work. So during those peak periods, we would expect longer queues on the driveway. However, the way that the site is laid out, I wouldn't be concerned if there was queuing. Because no queuing on the site is going to back up onto another roadway and stop traffic. I'm sure you've all seen it at a Dunkin' Donuts that, you know, backs out onto the roadway and starts blocking traffic. Like we wouldn't have that here. Even leaving the site like, so a car might not be able to back out of the parking spot, but that's going to be for like a minute. They would just have to wait during peak periods. So I just don't feel that it's unsafe to have the queuing on the site. And because there's ample room, it doesn't give me a concern if the queues were, you know, two or three vehicles, you know, which is something that I would probably expect.
This is Phil, I guess that's what I was kind of driving at, which is the gap issue really has to do with how it affects not traffic on the roads, but traffic within the site itself. And this one looks like there's so much room on the interior that I wonder whether or how it will become an issue at this location.
I would say that, I mean, you're going to have traffic headed south on Main Street trying to make a left into the site. That's going to, they're going to conflict with traffic heading north on Main Street. So there needs to be enough space so that people don't get too aggressive on that left hand turn. Likewise, if you're on the site and you want to make a left, if there aren't many gaps on Main Street. Again, people are going to get more and more aggressive in terms of getting onto Main Street from the site. I can, I mean, I, every one of these things, and that's nothing to do with this one in particular, but a high volume. Not traffic generator, but traffic movement increaser, that's certainly not the technical word for it. That's, that's an issue, is trying to get all those people safely onto Main Street without a lot of frustrated drivers. That's, so I'm, when I say gap, I'm thinking more of gaps available on Main Street for people to get in and out. You know, I'm not, I'd be honest with you, I'm not that concerned about the internal workings of the thing. Everybody's going slower, you know, you're not dealing with 30 to 40 mile an hour traffic going both ways on Main Street during, during the peak hours. That's what I'm interested in. I, you know, whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts or any other thing that generates traffic similar to this. You know, they're always on roads that are relatively busy because they need the business. And that, that doesn't make it any easier to get in and out of these sites. I would really like to see something that demonstrate that there are enough, there's enough availability on Main Street under normal traffic. Conditions, not like COVID decreasing conditions that are going to allow that those movements to happen without undue driver frustration, which leads to accidents.
Oh my God.
So, so if I may about that, if we were to do a gap study, it would be during COVID conditions. So there's, there's no way to adjust that data for the gap study itself. We can adjust the number of volume, you know, that goes by if we needed to. You know, even some arbitrary number if someone, but it's not, that can't be calibrated into a gap study. You know, even some arbitrary number if someone, but it's not, that can't be calibrated into a gap study. So if you wanted the data, it would, it would have to be, you know, now in what we're calling COVID time. I just wanted to make that point before I lost the floor.
I mean, again, you know, I, I live in town along with the rest of the members here. And the first time there's an accident, there, somebody's going to turn to us and say, why did you approve that site? That's a dangerous situation. It does need to be looked at. I think in a little bit more detail, give give me a little bit more comfort. I don't know about the other two members of the board.
We need a motion on that.
To. I would make a motion that that we request some additional study as to how the traffic from the site is going to. Enter and exit Main Street and whether there is going to be an acceptable number of openings during. Peak, peak hours to allow that to happen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, if you gentlemen would like to continue on with anything else, Brian, do you have any?
Oh, I still have to, before, Brian, not to cut you off. I still have the question about the landscaping on this, on the north side of the site. I mean, we've seen that gentleman come in a number of times, very concerned about the, the, the impact on his property. And what what are the plans for that substantial existing arbiviti hedge? And the the large tree there in the northwest corner of the site?
That's one of my concerns also.
I'll start with the. In terms of the arbivites you're talking about on this side, Rick?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, I've got another exhibit here, let me see. Might show better. I have, I have this drawing inserted into an aerial photo. Let me see how this looks.
I mean, those existing arbivites have got to be twenty or thirty feet high. They're, they are pretty substantial.
Yeah, I mean, it it looks like they're partially on the butter's property and partially on this property. So the lot line is right here. The garage, you know, a few feet off that garage. So we're going to be cutting the grade down to construct this site and excavating out this area. So the intent of of this plan is to to install new arbivites all along this this side and this back area. You know, obviously, they they will mature to thirty feet high at some point. But it's kind of hard to tell how many of those are actually on our property or off our property. But I'd say the bulk of them are on our property based on this area.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if they're on, if they're on your, if they're on the other guy's property, well, then you can't take them down. But if they're on your property, you certainly could could leave them up. And keep that, keep that existing.
It would already be a good, well established buffer.
Yeah, yeah, I guess what I can say is let us take a closer look at it. I can't answer that from here.
And what about the tree? There's a substantial tree in the northwest corner. Make sure I got this right, yeah, northwest corner.
One of these trees?
No, 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 go right next to Main Street.
Down here.
On the existing conditions plan.
I got you, let me, let me. Yeah, there's a, there's a tree right about here that's going to be removed. That one there, you can see it when it's, is that the one you're referring to?
Doesn't show on that plane.
Okay, let me look at another. This is kind of a.
Oh, yeah, you can see it now.
This is an overview of existing conditions with the three lots.
Yeah, you can just barely see, it's a pretty decent tree. I, I'd like to see that if it's possible to leave the tree there and leave the existing arbivites alone. That would be marvelous if you want to augment the, the, the buffer with some more arbivites, that would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, I don't would honestly see saving this tree with all the utilities we got to put in through here. But we could take a look at. The arms here and see if there's any ability to save any. I don't know exactly where they are relative to the property line. We do have utilities going in through here, but let us come back to you on that.
I mean, certainly that that one utility, I believe it is that you've got shown through there. You could go around the edge of the tree without too much difficulty instead of making a straight run Main Street.
Yeah, let me look at it, Rick. I mean, the the root systems on that's quite large, so let us take a closer look for you.
I mean, certainly, I'll be honest with you, it certainly looks savable to me, especially if you, you know, put a little bend in that utility line. It's a shame to lose a decent buffer like that.
I hear you.
And then I'll go. There it is, I can see it now.
Yeah, this tree, this tree here.
Yes, that one. I mean, I can see you wanting to lose, I forget how far that existing arbiviti. Run goes to, I mean, obviously. No, you don't have a driveway there anymore, so you don't have a site distance issue.
Yeah, I mean, if you zoom in on this plan. You can see the edge of the arms are shown in the squiggly line. So they pretty much straddle the property line. And then there's two trees down here, I don't know which one you're referring to, but those are the two trees that we serve in. So we got to just take a closer look on site.
I would, I would like to make every attempt to save one or both of those trees if possible. That's my personal opinion. I like trees.
Anything else? Brian?
Mine.
No, my, my only concern was the crosswalk going across Wind Lane, that's all. I'd like to see something there, I mean, people already walk across, so. As long as there's some kind of delineation that, or some kind of crosswalk going across, something. I mean. I just, I feel you need something there. I'm not saying put the island there, but at least. I would put a crosswalk there because the chances of somebody. Walking across Main Street down further near the church, walking on that side of Main Street so that they can cross again. Go to the store, I don't know. I think most people are just going to walk right across Wind Lane. So. I kind of agree with the police chief that there should at least be something delineated there, some way that there's a cross.
And I'm sure they'll look into that, do you need that as a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that they look into still putting a crosswalk across Wind Lane at the intersection.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous for everybody, we'll make that a roll call. Jen, you can make that work. With that, gentlemen, any more questions before we bring the public in?
Nope.
Do you have any? Okay. Anything else that you guys would like to say before we ask anybody in the public?
No, thank you.
Is there anybody else out there from the public that would like to say anything, pro or con?
I would, sir. My name is Josh DeRoche, speaking on behalf of my spouse, Odilia DeRoche. We are the abutting property for the record on one sixty eight Main Street. I want to thank Mr. Ellis for his concerns with, as obviously the privacy as well as our property values. Would probably be biggest priority with the planned project. I can't speak to the arbivites that are currently existing. They are on the applicant's property right now. And you know, when. And. Mr. Higgins came to us the first couple of times. The one thing that we were very firm about is what what we were concerned about was obviously the privacy. We requested, you know, to have a robust screening along the property line. My concern with the existing arbivites were is that my previous neighbor has been tying them up by strings for years. As they're really not in the best of shape. And, you know, there's gaps in and they wouldn't really provide the best screening. So what what my proposal was, was putting in some new arbivites. However, looking, looking at this plan, they have listed as Thusia nigras, which are the dark American arbivites. Which are very slow growing. I would assume that they would probably put in six footers. Am I correct when I speak with that, Mr. Lombardo?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montero, my apologies. So for, and and I know they stated that they get to about thirty feet. I've, I've done a lot of research and when you actually grow them together, they stunt the growth, so they won't grow to full maturity. So, you know, there's a pretty large building that's that's a peak line over thirty feet. And, you know, that's kind of facing right towards our front yard. And my other bigger concern would be on the southeast side is how the, my, my house faces the. Pumps as well as the parking lot. And I have three floors and they're all bedrooms for my children. So. Waiting over, you know, twenty years for for these arbivites to grow to probably. Twenty feet is not the the best situation. So, you know, what I would hope or propose is that they could switch out the Thusia nigras and put in the Thusia green giants. Which grow approximately three feet per year. They do grow taller, they provide better screening and they're actually disease free, deer free. They're weather protective and they actually don't have to be trimmed because they grow in a cone shape. So I would think that would work for both the applicant and it certainly would work for the butter. That's, that's something we certainly would would appreciate. So if if I could put on record, that would be our request to have the Thusia green giants placed all along the property line. My other concern would be the loading dock. Where the loading dock is currently located is again on our property line. We do a lot of football throwing and, and, you know, ball playing right on that line. I have my pool in that area, so we have a lot of family outings there. And to have a large truck come in and, you know, with the backup signals. With the proposed deli and the coffee shop and, you know, everything else that's going to be coming in and out of the store. That's a lot of backing up and unloading. So what what I would think would be possible is maybe even putting that loading dock towards the street side. That would certainly protect the noise and, you know, take a large burden off of of the noise for the butter. And kind of just going along with the privacy as well as the noise. I know they do have a shop, a vacuum over in that area. I'm wondering if that's necessary in this case. And honestly, with the vac, I wouldn't only be speaking upon myself. I would also be speaking, you know, to the, to the residents on John Street and Russell Street. As I can certainly tell you that I can pretty much hear anyone on Russell Street with their conversations. Because with the, the layout of the cemetery, it's, it's like a quad and it's almost like an amphitheater. So noise will travel pretty easily across that quad, as I would call it. And you would be able to hear it, you would hear it on John Street and Russell Street. So I, I would hope that's something that's really not necessary as the vac, as, as that would also decrease. Noise in, in, in a residential area. And, you know, I know we have a lot of concerns and I'm speaking, I, it's just, we've been waiting a long time for this period. And obviously, our other concerns would be a lot of the support equipment that goes along with the building, specifically in the back. I know that they have compressors and, and, you know, I've, I've gone by a couple of the New England farms. In the other two in the area, and they do have a lot of support equipment. So when you're bringing in a coffee shop and a deli, coolers for beer, et cetera, that's a lot of support equipment. So my question would be, is there different compressors that are more like residential friendly? That may, you know, be a little quieter than some? And is that something that that you've actually looked into?
I can try to address your questions once you've finished, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Are you all set, sir, as far as asking any more questions?
I mean, I have, again, you know, this is a huge project and it affects us a lot as a family, a young family. So, you know, I do have, the lighting would be another, another issue. I, and, you know, I'm happy to hear a lot of the adjustments that they've made to lower the bases as well as as the, the pole size. But I would think that it would be appropriate to do a peer review on the, on the lighting. Not only for myself, I would actually think it would affect Mr. Liberty across the street even more than it would be. For example, if if they did agree to the Green Giant arbivites, that would take care of a lot of my lighting concerns as well as the noise concerns. But as far as Mr. Liberty, I can certainly ensure that he would be happy to have a, a peer review for, for lighting. Because, you know, he sits down a little bit as well. I'm sure lighting would affect him even more than it would my family.
What are you speaking for?
I'm just speaking for the neighborhood, you know, the residents around this area. You know, we're all residents of Cushnet. I'm just trying to find out what's best for everybody. You know, again, it's a big project and I appreciate your time and your effort.
Are you all set, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
No, you're more than welcome. Frank, do you want to do that now? You want to do it later? How do you want?
No, no, I'd like to address Mr. DeRoche's comments as much as I can tonight, but.
Before you get started, I want, we have three or four more public hearings, but we're not going to stop this public hearing. I just want to let the people know that we, you are on the schedule, we are running a little behind, usually we're running ahead. But for those people, we will be going with all the rest of them, it's just going to be a little later, so hang in with us, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarity from Mr. DeRoche on a couple of things that we could take back to the developers. So regarding the existing arbivites here, did I, did I understand that you're not happy with the condition of those now?
Yeah, I'm just concerned certainly in the future because, like I said, he's been tying those up for years just by a string to try to, you know. The, the majority of the base of the, the arbivites are gone, it's just kind of the outlying branches that are remaining.
All right, yeah, that's just contrary to what one of the planning board members was saying. So you'd be satisfied if we, we put in new plants, just a different species and.
That's correct.
I think that's an excellent idea with the Green Giant arbives, I'm sure we can do that. So I don't think that's, that's a concern for us. So we'd be glad to do that. We, I have come back with some questions about. Some of the equipment levels, the vacuum. Some of those issues, I mean, the, the lighting plan, we submitted, we submitted a photometric plan to the board. So it does have foot candle levels on it. And there's no spillage on your property, we took great care to make sure that that was the case. So the board does have that information. And I think I mentioned during my presentation that we eliminated any light poles in this back area. The one light pole here shines in towards, towards this direction here, so there's no backlighting here. We just have some safety lights behind the building over the doors, so we're not intending, there's no need to illuminate that. There's no, there's no. Concern from our point of view, so feel free to look at that photometric plan. I think we've, we've done.
Well, I think, if I may, I think Mr. DeRoche would be happy if you tore all those arbivites down and put that. Special species of arbivites in, am I correct, sir?
Absolutely. And I certainly would appreciate, as Mr. Ellis said, if that tree in the corner stayed, it's a beautiful tree. And, you know, it would, you know, it just, it looks good in the neighborhood as well.
I guess I'd have to look into that to see. What area that like Frank was talking about, the root structure, correct? I'm, I'm sure they're, they're bending to try and make this work and they're trying to make the neighborhood happy. We're here to make sure it works out right for everybody.
Yeah, just if I could just ask, there seems to be two trees over there. Discussing the one that's closest to the corner, I think there's like another one.
Yes, it would be the big evergreen.
This one here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that back to the developer.
Any other boat, people from the public would like to say?
What about the, the loading dock, Mr. Montero? That's, that's a kind of a big one too, because that's a lot of noise with the trucks. It would be an issue to slide that over to the street side, it would, I would think it would make more sense.
I, I think, I'd have to ask the board to give input on that. I mean, in terms of the loading zone, we need that, we need to have one somewhere, right? So if we don't have one, we're going to have, you know, trucks in places where they shouldn't be. So I, I, I don't think we want to have it facing the street. I know the neighbor across the street was concerned about their view of the building as well. And we wouldn't want to have trucks backing into the space. And we wouldn't want to have trucks backing into the space here across this main driveway. So the intent was to keep it back here so it doesn't interfere with the driveway. So I don't think it's a better spot from a site circulation point of view. I think maybe we should focus on how to buffer that best we can. So I'll I'll take that back to to the developer as well. I mean, I think you realize that this this development's going to be lower than you, lower than your property here. So I think that helps in terms of, you know, looking down on something as opposed to looking up at something. But I'll talk to the developer about the loading zone concerns that you have.
I'm sorry, I might add that the the loading zone, you know, is required and it's kind of a loaded term. It 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 makes it sound as if, you know, every other half minute, some truck is coming in and out. You probably all know the nature of a convenience store. A lot of the deliveries happen to be, you know, Coca-Cola truck shows up, the Frito-Lay shows up. Sometimes they'll park in regular parking spaces. So you I think I think you'll find that the loading zone itself is not a very often used feature. And the timing of the use can be controlled as well. So I I will, as Frank says, we can look into, you know, added features buffering it. But I I I think it's a little more of a loaded term, no pun intended, than than I think that that you might otherwise think that that loading zone would be.
Now, it it this would probably be more for the planning board now. Zoning bylaws, is is that even a approved use from from what my understanding is? That there should be no impervious surfaces on the side or behind the buildings. That does include maneuvering as well, so I would think that's not even approved through the bylaws.
That that's that's not true, but, you know, we'll we'll, to your earlier point, we'll look at, you know, the buffering of it, see if we can do something.
Actually, I'm I'm looking at the bylaws right here and it says parking, storing, maneuvering areas, impervious surfaces are not allowed in the side and rear yards.
Yeah, that that's that's meant the rear yard setbacks. We've we've, I don't I don't think it's necessary to go down that rabbit hole of zoning by law. We've told you, we're going to look at the buffering on that and and we will.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Are you gentlemen all set?
I am. I mean, if they're amenable to to removing the old arborvitae and planting the new green green giants, that that's fine with me. I would like to see every effort made to keep that nice evergreen tree out front. The the loading, where is the where is the vacuum by any chance? Or is there going to be?
I don't know. It's just mute every time I do it.
Right here, you see my point there, Rick?
You know, I mean, that that's, it's not like it's right up against the back of somebody's property.
Okay, I mean, the the intent was to, I mean, we 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 tried to do the best we could with moving things as far as we could from the applicant, you know. Deliveries to the tanks are over here as far as they can be, the the vax will be over here. So we understand the concerns. I think the thing is to to focus on the buffering. And if we if we do some more mature shrubs, that's certainly going to help.
I mean, I mean, if I were if I were living next to that loading area, I my only comment would be, I certainly wouldn't appreciate a a backup alarm at six o'clock in the morning. You know, that's.
Absolutely my concerns. That's why I brought up the bylaws and and I asked maybe it would be better suited towards the street side. And and, you know, as I've stated before, my children's bedrooms are all on that southeast side and you can hear pretty pretty good. I do understand that the the arborvitae would would buffer some sound. However, I don't think it would buffer all sounds.
Takes us, it takes a sound for it to to actually buffer the the noise, the vegetation.
I'm sure they will take all of that into consideration. Is there anything else anybody would like to say, pro or con?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, sir. Who's speaking, please?
Dave DeViggen. I I actually just joined the meeting. I was stuck in a in a Zoom meeting that went on forever. So I'm I'm really. So I I'm really lost at what was discussed to date. I will simply ask a question if it was covered, so be it, but I represent Pat Liberty. You can see that the side of the building faces his driveway and therefore his house. There are really two concerns that that the Liberty family has. One is screening on, you know, from what he is used to looking at now. He looks at a single family home with a hedge line and a couple of big mature trees in the front. And now it's going to be, from what I read quickly, a small two-foot-high hedge line for that building. And I was reviewing the the bylaws and they require planting of trees every forty feet along all streets for commercial developments such as this. So his request is that a couple of trees be put on that side between the the entryway and the Josh's property line. So you have two in there and then, you know, continue it all the way around. So it it creates a, you know, over time, it'll create a nice looking sight from the road and it'll help, it'll help with noise. It'll help with screening. And the bylaws also mention shrubs, no no less than six feet apart throughout the perimeter of of the street, the streets themselves. So we we we're requesting, we're strictly requesting that the applicant really comply with the bylaws for plantings, which will help the end result for my client. And the the second point is lighting. I know there's a lighting plan submitted, however, I'm not a lighting expert. I don't know anybody in town that's a lighting expert. We just would like it reviewed by a a peer review engineer to make sure that it's really respective of the neighbors around it because you have to keep in mind, we're looking at a site that, you know, is, I know it's it's an eyesore, but not at nighttime because it's in darkness. And we're going to go from darkness to, you know, something lit up like a Christmas tree compared to what you see now. And, you know.
Just give me one, David, give me one second. You just came in. We had talked about how they lowered the lighting, how they were going to put special arborvitae in down Mr. Deroche's portion of the land. They're going to try to keep the big tree that's on the corner. They did not say they would, they would look at it from there. I just, I, you're being repetitive of what we heard and I'm running on a time constriction.
Sure.
Continue this as long as it takes to make everybody happy. But we still have other people we have to go through. I'm working on an hour over what we're supposed to be doing, but.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, this meeting, but they have talked a lot about this. I believe Mr. Deroche is pretty happy, not all happy, but they have been talking about it. And there Frank is going to go back to his folks and see what they want to do. Is that correct, Frank?
Yeah, yeah, we 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 did hear a lot of these things, Dave, and and we'll come back to the next meeting and and try to address everybody's concerns best we can.
Okay, thank you.
I might, I might say also, I know that the developer would would be interested if if Dave has any special knowledge or special ability to talk about the lighting or whatever. We might, we might have, you know, off off, not off record, but whatever, offline conversations on that. It might be helpful. It might move things forward a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, one last comment beside, Mr. Higgins did try to try to have a conversation with me. I just, I told him that I needed to see the plans first, so we're unable to connect, but I do give him credit. He was trying to reach out to me and we're hopeful to maybe have a conversation in the next few days.
Okay, so that's something you're willing to do, that that's.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
With that, anybody else from the public like to say anything? With that, we will continue this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. This is Gary Hathaway, nineteen Westland Street and five ninety Main Street.
Go right ahead, sir.
Um.
Have you been listening to us?
The whole time, sir.
Okay, so I just don't want you to be repetitive. Go right ahead.
I'll I'll try not to be repetitive. I understand that S W Cole did a peer review. Did they peer review the traffic?
Can I, can I respond to that? This is Phil. I asked, I I asked the my contact there. He said he thought the the gentleman who peer reviewed it had no particular issues with traffic. But unfortunately, he had, I guess, some kind of a family emergency. We weren't able to really reach him to to hear it from him. So we're going to, we're going to try to do that between between tonight and next hearing to try to get him to give us any feedback on traffic.
Okay, Mr. Montero, would you share that slide eight two point one? That's the front of the the front of the building. The, on that slide, what I noticed was that it said joint venture for coffee in deli. And as I've looked at the New England Farm sites, that that normally means that the joint venture would mean there'll be another business inside there doing that type of product, whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts or a Rosie's Deli or something like that. Is that correct?
I I don't know the answer to that, Phil. Do you know?
No, I don't. I I don't. Since since we reduced the the square footage, I don't know if that applies, but we'd have to get back on that. Is there a particular issue with that?
Yeah, I'm I'm getting with it, Mr. Lombard. And on on August, on you submitted a floor plan for the thirty nine hundred square feet, which kind of outlined everything. And with the new thirty six hundred square foot, I did not see that new plan. And the reason why I'm asking the question and and I have a store down the road and I am also concerned with traffic like some of the other folks are. And especially since we've got a three-way stop and it's going to feed into that traffic. And I'm concerned about drive-by traffic as as what Heather mentioned about, you know, passerby traffic. I think she used the correct word. So I'm very concerned with that. Now, in her traffic report, I was looking at it and I did not see that the chip generation summary contained anything to do with the restaurants. So, you know, typically, it may be a nine thirty-three or nine thirty-six is roughly, I I'm not sure if that's the right numbers, but that trip generation before is just for grocery and gasoline or or, as you say, convenience store. But it's clearly that there's multiuses inside that location, which changed that traffic study. And I'm really concerned because I just want to make sure that it's done right. I think it'll still work, but we need to look at it with adding those things into the traffic study so that I'm not damaged by the fact that people avoid this area and I don't get the drive-by traffic. And I think it's also in the best interest of Mr. Higgins to look at it as well because if we create another problem at that three-way stop in the middle of town, people are going to avoid hit that area and they were going to avoid Mr. Higgins' location as well as my location. So I would just ask that either we have it peer reviewed, you know, because I think it made sense. It's a very important topic. We, you know, things like truck traffic, I don't see that being addressed. And I think Mr. Ellis was exactly on when he was talking about some of the things that he wanted to see inside there with the gaps and things like that. I think he has very valid concerns as well, and there will be a lot of in and out traffic. And I think you did submit a truck plan, if I remember correctly, Mr. Montero.
Yeah, I did talk about that earlier, the the delivery pattern, but there is a plan.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. There is a truck term plan in in the set of drawings as well.
All right. I I I, again, I just would like the town to consider that we put in this business here that it doesn't impact my drive-by traffic because that area can get clogged up. And if it does get clogged up, I could be severely damaged in my business and destroy another one. Because I do get a lot of people that come through here from Lakeville, Free Town, Rochester. And if they're not coming through this route route anymore because it's too clogged up, as you saw what happened with the Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts has kind of clogged the center of town up a little bit. That's all. I would, I would just like to at least be looked at and see what things we could do when you add in, because it now becomes not just a drive-by, it becomes a destination because now I want to go get a cup of coffee from a Dunkin' Donuts, a Mary Lou's or whatever, or I want to go to the deli and sub shop. Now it's a destination. So it's not just just drive-by traffic, it's also destination factor. So I would just like that to be considered, please.
Okay. Are we all set, gentlemen?
I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Hi, my name is Tom O'Brien. I own Rochelle's Restaurant on Main Street. And I know it 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 just came up that it's questionable if what the joint ventures are going to be. But I just wanted to ask a question maybe of the board, if there's enough parking for for the joint ventures as well as the gas station and convenience store. Because I'm, I obviously have issues with parking. I kind of am aware of that in different places. And and I guess my question would be maybe from someone on the board because I believe that that you'd need a certain amount of parking spaces for the size of the building. But then you also need a certain amount of additional spaces for each separate venture. And you also need parking spaces for for employees. So I I'm just wondering if that's been addressed because in looking at the diagram, it doesn't really, to me, it doesn't seem like there's enough parking. But I don't know. I mean, you people would know better than I.
I believe they stated that there was twenty-five parking spots. Is that correct, Frank?
Yeah, there's twenty-five proposed and there's eighteen required. The the twenty-five proposed actually does not include the parking at the dispensers, which, you know, everybody knows that happens. So I actually would view that you have another eight spaces on site. But, you know, to that, to that point, you know, we feel this is more than adequate for for the parking needs of the proposed development. And we'll get some answers on the co-brands and even, you know, if those exist. Certainly, when this project started, it 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 looked different than it does now. The elimination of the of the drive-through certainly eliminates a potential co-brand. We just, Mr. Higgins couldn't make it tonight, so we just can't give you all the answers tonight, but we'll we'll certainly do that the next week.
Thank you.
Does that help you out, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak, pro or con, please? With that, because I am running late, anybody else on the board to say anything, Rick or Brian?
I'm all, I'm all set. Evidently, the 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 ballpark between lot thirty-six and that proposed development is, I think we all have an agreement on that. And they feel that they're going to, they will look at saving that big evergreen tree. I would, I would like to see every consideration made towards that. I I'm all set.
Brian?
I'm all set. With that.
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you end, one more just point of note.
Who am I speaking to?
This is Gary again, Gary Hathaway.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ellis suggested last time when we asked the applicant to give an extension that we had ninety days as a planning board. The bylaws say sixty, so I don't know how that impacts the discussion. So that would mean next week there would have to be a vote and every, all the information would probably have to be in. Is that how I'm reading?
No, this is the brand new, they withdrew the first set of plans and this is a brand new set of plans, so the date starts from today.
It starts from today.
Yes, sir.
So that'd be sixty days then.
I don't, I think it's ninety, but I'm not sure.
It does say sixty. If you would look at it just to, just just to make sure that we have it right.
No problem.
Just as as a, as another matter, I believe because of the COVID situation that these deadlines no longer apply the way I understand that the deadline situation. I may be wrong, but that's that's how, that's how I understood it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can shed some light on that.
I'm just, I I want, don't share, we're, I'm running an hour behind and I have five other things to do, but go right ahead.
Um, I, the governor signed into order back in early December something that wiped out the the tolling of timelines. So the timelines are effective, effectively active, if you will. So, but all of it can be corrected if the applicant's representative simply requests the continuance himself to the next meeting. All is good. There's no.
In writing, in writing, correct, David?
Followed up with, you can do it verbally tonight and then follow up in writing tomorrow.
Yes, that's fine.
As long as he agrees to that, I think the town's safe, which is the right thing to do on their behalf, on their side anyway.
I, I, yeah, but once we're up against the deadline, I I guess, somebody. Yeah, once we're up against the deadline, I, I guess somebody mentioned sixty days or ninety days. I forget which.
It is sixty. It is sixty.
We, we filed on February fourth or so. So if, if you're proposing to, to have the hearing after April fourth, then yeah, we'll certainly abide by that.
You had the filing again, but it doesn't count till tonight till you come in front of the planning board.
We can worry about that. Okay, then we can worry about that next month.
Yep. And with that, this is, we, that, we'll, we do, we will continue this till next month. We, is there a motion to continue the meeting till the twenty-second of April at six forty-five PM?
Motion to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With a roll call vote, we did that. This meeting will be continued till six forty-five on April twenty-second. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
With that, I forgot where I was. Fifty-two Morris's Lane. I have to, we have to go up from the public hearing into regular hearings. Is that right, Rick?
I believe so. I'm not, I'm not so good with the procedural stuff. That's what I, that's what I depended on Henry for.
Yeah, we're looking. With that, the motion to go back from public, regular, public hearing into regular meeting. And now to go back into a public hearing for fifty-two Morris's Lane. With that.
I would make a motion that we leave the public hearing for the proposed commercial development of One Fifty-Eight Main Street and enter into a public hearing continuation for the ground-mounted solar array at fifty-two Morris's Lane.
I second that.
All in favor? Brian?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, we have fifty-two Morris's Lane. Do I have a?
Time.
Chief, I haven't had the paper for that one.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is a continuation.
We're continuing fifty-two Morris's Lane, right?
This was, well, this was last meeting, it was continued to.
Okay. So go right ahead.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself. I'm sorry we're running so far behind.
No worries. I'll try to be to the point tonight, try and help you catch up, but my name is Brandon Smith. I'm with Borrego Solar here present the fifty-two Morris's Lane project. Also on the line with us is project developer Ryan Bailey, also with Borrego Solar. If possible, I'd like to share my screen. I have our, our plan set to make sure that everyone's following along.
Go right ahead.
All right. Are you able to see the aerial imagery with our plan or our, uh, design overlaid on it?
I can, Brian and Rick?
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, yes, I can see it. I'm arranging my, my paperwork here. I needed an office just to put down all the papers from all these.
Yeah, me too. I got a pile here.
Great. So just to refresh the board, this is a five-megawatt AC solar and energy storage facility located off of Morris's Lane. On your screen here, Morris's Lane is to the southeast. U- utilizing and existing thing. Since our last, or at the first public hearing, a few issues or questions came up that we've spent the last couple or the last interim period addressing. One of those, I'll just kind of go over the, the outstanding items that were brought up at the first meeting and how we've addressed them. Uh, there were questions about stormwater for this site. We have taken another look or closer look. We, we have done a stormwater analysis. Um, and we provided a stormwater report to the board. We did take another look at that and have revised, tweaked it to adhere to the cushioned stormwater regulations. We submitted or resubmitted material to make sure that we're meeting those regulations. That I've been in touch with Merrill Lee Kelly, has been my contact with that to review for a stormwater management permit. I talked to her today. She said that looks in good order. We also have been in touch with Pat Henin with a few requests from Chief Gallagher that we've incorporated into the plan here. Specifically water cisterns. So we're, you know, we're, this project is several hundred feet from the, the road here. So rather than having a, we don't have fire hydrant close by. So to supplement fire department resources, we're going to be placing a five-hundred-gallon cistern at each of the electrical equipment areas. You'll see on the screen here with these light blue rectangles, which represent the energy stored. So it'd be a five-hundred-gallon cistern here located approximately thirty feet ahead of the energy storage. So if you're pulling, you know, if a fire apparatus is pulling into the site, they don't have to pass the equipment before getting to that cistern. And likewise, another one up at this second electrical equipment area. We will also have provisions for Knox Box on the, on our access gate as requested by Chief Gallagher. Also, we have had our decommissioning estimate reviewed by S.W. Cole. They responded or they returned that estimate. They were in agreement with their, with their, their revised number for the decommissioning estimate, so that, that looks acceptable to us. And then the last item that we've been working on, and you'll see in your plans, I've included a, a new sheet for a traffic management plan for construction time period traffic on Morris's Lane. I know that was a point that we wanted to look at because of Morris's Lane. It's a small access road, so this, it was a concern about construction level. We did take a look at alternatives to access the site. Unfortunately, we don't have any site control on any other access roads to bring material into the site during construction. You see like Tuckaway Road here, south of the site. Uh, we don't have site control over these parcels here, so we wouldn't be able to utilize that. So because Morris's Lane is kind of the only access to the site, we have put together this traffic management plan, which I you know, I, I feel like is a pretty good plan. It's going to ensure that the construction level traffic is managed properly. It dictates signage, you know, construction traffic, speed limits, some signage that we'll be putting up and some escort requirements for large delivery vehicles. I included it in the plan set as, you know, an additional sheet, not as an addendum to the plans so that it will be readily, you know, readily available and apparent to any subcontractor or site supervisor or anything like that, that's working on this project to ensure that it's followed. And basically, the, the gist of that traffic management plan is to ensure that construction traffic is, you know, obeying the speed limit and a reduced speed limit and not utilizing residential driveways for turnarounds, that type of thing on Morris's Lane. Um, so other than those few items, those are the changes we've made since the last time we've heard this project. I'm happy to answer any other questions the board may have or any neighbors might have.
Gentlemen from the board?
Um, what, what times? I don't know how to ask this question, but obviously there'll be certain times when there's a lot of construction vehicle activity and other times when there will not be. I mean, I would assume that during the some of these things blend together. Are there, are these sites both trees or are they fields?
These are wooded. Yeah.
All right. So you're going to have a, you're going to have a fair amount of traffic uh, when the land clearing part of it is happening. And I, I'm assuming that, you know, when, when it's ready for the solar panels, that there'll be another time period when you've got a relatively large amount or a larger amount of construction traffic. Are there any other times during the construction that you would anticipate? You know, a lot of, of construction vehicle activity?
Uh, I think you really hit it, hit the nail on the head there. It's so it's earthwork, the early stages of the project, the tree, tree clearing. That would kind of be a surge in, in construction traffic. And then deliveries of the actual material. So early on with tree clearing, earthwork, obviously there'd be equipment delivered, but they wouldn't be making trips. There's no, you know, no material, earth material being removed or imported to the site other than like aggregate for the road, that type of thing. So that would be one period and then module delivery, racking delivery, electrical equipment delivery, which is more towards the middle of the construction phase, which is typically a six-month period. So the later, the latter stages of construction is more like electrical, you know, electricians wiring everything up. It's not as much, not as many heavy equipment deliveries or anything like that.
What, what were the kinds of foundations you were going to have for these panels?
Yeah.
You have to, I have to, you have to bear with me. I mean, we've got so many of these applications right now. Sometimes it's difficult to straighten out which, which things applied to which proposal.
Yeah, definitely. And I know it's been a little while since you've heard this one, so I'd happy to go over whatever, anything that you need to refresh. But this system is proposing to use an augured screw foundation, so no concrete foundations or no ballast, nothing that. Um, they're, you know, large screws basically that are screwed into the, into the earth. And then the, the racking is bolted to those foundations and the modules are placed on that racking.
I mean, I guess my, my, my biggest concern traffic-wise is that you know, if construct this, especially logging operations. I, I would. Is there some way that we can? If there needs to be a police detail there to keep traffic under control during those peak construction times, it, I would like to see something something done for that. You know, it, it may not be a problem, maybe every, every one of those people hauling chips and stumps and God knows what else off the property is going to be, you know, a considerate of the, of the neighbors on Morris's right lane. But if, if they're not, if there is a problem with that truck traffic and construction traffic, I would like to see a provision made for setting up a police detail to keep it in check. I know you've got, I know you've got the, the signage and all that. Unfortunately, when somebody's beating on that guy and the to get chips off the site, you know, twenty loads a day or whatever the magic time is, they don't pay attention to signs too much. But they are more likely to pay attention to an officer.
Yeah, and actually.
I'm sure, I don't know how to condition that, you know, and obviously if, if everybody's considerate of, of the, the houses and the people that live on Morris's Lane, that's great. It's probably not necessary. Necessary, but I, I would like to, I would like to leave it in the police chief's hand that if he feels that there is going to be a detail required during those peak times that this operation will, will provide funding for that detail.
Well, yeah, I mean, I definitely understand that your point and actually to that, just to make sure that we're on the same page as regarding this traffic management plan. That's actually one of the pieces that I have outlined on this, on this sheet. So it's not kind of the signage is one piece, but it's, you know, a little bit harder to, to show what you just explained diagrammatically. But the notes basically specify what is classified as a restricted vehicle, which would be, you know, a large delivery vehicle, basically. And though, and it provides conditions for those restricted vehicles to have either an escort vehicle or a police detail if, if so choose, if, you know, if it, if that is required.
I mean, I mean, obviously, even if the guy in the detail just stands there and, and looks at traffic, that, that's all it takes.
Have you been down Morris's Lane lately, Rick?
I, I have not.
I took a ride down there today and I believe DPW have widened the road and putting some rocks and stone dust and to make it a little easier to go up and down the road.
So they can go faster now?
Well, that's just the goal of order and maybe it's hard to pass two vehicles on that road, but they made it a little easier.
And, and that's, and that's really my point is, is to try and generate some respect for the neighbors and the other traffic on the road when they're, when they're hauling the, the stumps and the chips and all that stuff off, off-site. It, it doesn't seem like the.
While I have you, gentlemen, I think I lost. I, I lost a paper from a gentleman on Hunter Street. I don't know if I gave it to you guys in your paperwork?
Yeah, I think there is.
Let's see.
I just have too many papers here. I must have lost it, but if one of you gentlemen, one of you gentlemen have it, I appreciate it if you could read it, please.
I've got something from S.W. Cole on the.
No, this is from.
Farms, and then I've got something from Merrill Lee on the, the runoff or the runoff calculation from this site. Let's see. There's a lot of papers here to look through.
There's certainly is. Well, you guys look for your papers. How about if I state this one from Merrill Lee? That'll help on this. Uh, the Conservation Committee has already heard the solar projects that you have before you tonight on Park Drive, Cushing Lane, ten fifty-two Main Street, fifty-two Morris's Lane and five forty-yard Main Street. In general, the commission has been satisfied with the stormwater systems the solar arrays have proposed to put in place. Although I would serious recommend peer review for the two in the woods, Park Drive and fifty-two Morris's Lane, as they are so close to each other and will have additional stormwater from Deep Brook Estates to consider. Borrego on fifty-two Morris's Lane has submitted a stormwater permit application already, which covers all the particulars we have asked for in our regulations. Similarly, Cushing Lane and Woodridge at ten fifty-two Main Street are very close to each other, and so their stormwater systems should be examined together. In general, however, they all claim there will be little grading and disturbance of the ground, so there should have a little effect on the stormwater. In addition, the Conservation Commission has asked the following for solar arrays. The chain link fence that arrays shall be raised approximately six inches above the ground to allow for smaller animals to get through, for example, rabbits and box turtles. The ground surface of the sites shall be planted with pollen enter-friendly mixes rather than just grasses. The solar arrays themselves should be at least fifty feet from the wetlands whenever possible. Our understanding is that the solar project on five forty-yard Main Street is being required by MA Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program to put a conservation restriction on the remaining land on that site. However, there is no application with NH ESP attached, so we'd like to know for sure this has been applied and we will put it in place in a timely fashion. As for New England Farms, the applicant appears to thoroughly consider stormwater and treats it. However, I am not an engineer. My recommendation is to have peer reviewed by qualified engineering firm. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Merrill Lee Kelly, Conservation and Stormwater Agent. I just figured I'd read that into the minutes. I know that it covers a lot of different solar arrays, but while you're looking for that paper that I lost, I would read that.
I, I can't find, I can't find that additional.
I can't find either, yeah.
Well, I do apologize to the gentleman on Hunter Street. Well, I do apologize to the gentleman on Hunter Street. I did have it in my files, but as you gentlemen know, we are bombarded with, uh, solar project and I lost it and I apologize, sir, but I will read it into the next one.
And just to touch on a couple of Merrill Lee's comments there that, um, just to kind of make sure we're on the same page, we, as far as a wildlife gap, that is our standard. Um, so it'll be that six inch gap on our, on our fence that we're proposing for this system. The pollinator seed mix, that is kind of our standard go to, um, uh, seed mix for within the, the array. So those, those items that she listed there, as well as the setback, you know, minimum setback from wetlands, 50 foot. This layout that you see in front of you, uh, meets those requirements as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions for Mr. Smith.
Just tell who you are. We know who you are, Pat.
Uh, Patrick Hannan, town of Acushnet. I've, I've been contacted by a couple of the selectmen and they wanted me to look into whether or not this needed a land use permit. So I'd like to get some information, um, on the energy storage equipment so that I could look that up and be sure that you don't need a land use permit here. So could you send me some information on that, Brian?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. What, um, is there anything specific that you needed?
Hazardous materials.
Okay, regarding hazardous materials? Yeah, I can send you.
Whether there's anything considered to be a hazardous material. If you could just send me the information so I can research it and, and give them an answer. And then, um, I was going to echo the peer review. You know, that's an important item for these projects, so. And that's it. Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that. I'll shoot you an email, um.
You can take care of that?
Yep.
Good. Gentlemen, anything else?
So SW call has not looked at this one yet for stormwater mark. Is that correct? I thought they had.
They have, they have reviewed it for decommissioning.
I mean, if the commission is set, I mean, the commission's got the, the biggest interest here. They, it's been peer reviewed, uh, it would seem that a second peer review by SW call would not be a unnecessary thing.
I thought I was doing pretty good with all the paperwork, but I just guess I didn't have enough on this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Pat Hannon, again, the stormwater bylaw requires that the stormwater management plan be peer reviewed. Just a peer review for decommissioning doesn't cover that. And I had spoken to you on the phone about the type of soils out here. And the fact that, you know, a lot of D soils and very high groundwater, and I, I think the peer review would be important. Not to just be with a board member, but.
I, I, maybe I misread Merrill Lee's letter.
He actually said she's not an engineer and she recommended.
Well, no, I, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
Well, do we need to do a walkabout on this one?
It's all tough.
Maybe we get four wheelers and have fun. That's okay. No, if that's fine, I, I have driven out down Morris's Lane the other day. And, uh, we'll just keep, continue with preview that stormwater setup and get Mr. Hannon that, uh, hazardous, I don't think there's too much hazardous waste on this.
Yeah, as regarding hazardous ways, there's no hazardous waste, um, on, you know, for any of the materials used on, on the site. Um, everything sells enclosed. The one, the one item of note that is the potential for spill is transformer oil, which is, you know, very common on a, you commercial, commercial or schools. Typical transformer has, you know, oil for cooling. So that would, in, we, we place secondary spill containment for that, but as, but that's not really necessarily hazardous material as, um.
It's, it's by no means a deal breaker. It's just a requirement.
Yep, but regardless, I'll provide that information.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. And then regarding, um, peer review, if the, if the board, if that's the board's wish, I just would like to make sure we have clear direction on that so that I pursue that, um, and make sure that's, you know, we get the peer reviewer, the required information and get that ball rolling.
Peer review wants to be on stormwater, is that correct?
Yeah, if that's, if that's what will be required, if that's going to be required, I'd like, I'd like to have clear direction on that so we can.
You still here, Pat?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, that's, you want a peer review for stormwater, correct?
And it's part of your MS four.
Yeah, that's correct.
We require it.
Okay, though, is that enough direction?
Okay, who's responsible for getting the peer review done? Is that us or the conservation?
You pick the peer reviewer, they pay him.
Okay, I would just have SW call. I would make the motion. We have SW call review the drainage calculations for the Morse's Lane solar array project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian? Mark, aye, roll call. With that, we will go from there. Uh, we'll continue this meeting till the 22nd of April at. Well, you guys think half an hour is enough for New England's retail next week or we need longer time?
Well, I, I, you know what, Mark? I would just as soon do them as shorter times because if we pick too long, then we end up, you know, sitting around doing nothing, you know? I, I know it may be a little inconvenient to some of the applicants, but I think in the long run, it's, it's better to put them closer together.
I think it works at that 15 minute interval. You've got it. We'll put him for seven o'clock on April 22nd. For 52 Morris's Lane.
Sounds good. That sounds good. And I will, uh, reach out to SW call, um, and set that peer review up regarding on my end.
Right, can't ask for better than that. Thank you. With that, is there a motion to continue on to the next?
Oh, let's see.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. What do we have next? Uh, Park Drive, let me see. Give me a second here. Is there a motion to go into a site plan review and special permit for 1447 Park Drive?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call. Jen, can we do, just say unanimous roll call? Is that okay?
I believe everyone has to say aye on a vote.
Okay, Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark, aye. Thank you, Jen. Uh, four, we're running a little behind schedule here. I apologize. 7:35. Site plan review and solar special permit 1447 Park Drive, Acushnet, Mass. At 7:35 PM, be a Zoom, Zoom meeting. In accordance with the Acushnet General Bylaw, zoning article eight, sections 3.4 and 3.5 and the Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations, article three, section 313, to process an application for a site plan review for a special permit for a 7.5 MW solar array proposed by, I hope I have it right, Sin Cara Park Drive LLC. The engineer is Weston and Sampson. Is there anybody out there from Weston and Sampson?
Good evening. Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
Yep, Rob Bukowski from Weston Sampson, representing Sin Cara. So if I can share my screen.
Certainly, may sir.
All right, can everybody hear that?
Again, I apologize for being late, but we'll just keep on moving.
No, no problem at all. Totally understand. So yeah, I'll give a, a quick overview and then if there are questions, happy to, to answer them. But as you said, Mr. Chairman, it's a seven and a half megawatt DC, five megawatt AC, um, proposed solar array off of Park Drive. There are three separate areas of the array. There's a northern one, um, kind of middle one and western one. Right through the middle is a utility easement, um, that's existing now. Access will be off Park Drive. There will be gravel access roads that are built, um, to access all these arrays and, and working through with, um, Pat Hannon and, and the fire chief. They requested that we have 20 foot wide, 360 degree access around each of these arrays. So within each fenced area, I'll just zoom into each one. This is as an example. Um, within the fence here, you can see this area here is a 20 foot dedicated accessways. So in the event of any kind of emergency, the fire department would have full access around each of the three arrays. The interconnection will actually be in the existing easement, so there'll be new utility poles that are put in as part of that, but they'll be, you know, away from Park Drive, so they, they won't even be visible. There are some, it's, it's a fairly flat site. There are wetlands surrounding them. Uh, we did get conservation commission approval back in December, um, for it. We're, you know, in generally, in general, we're, we're outside of the wetlands completely, but, you know, trying to maintain as much of a, an offset as we can there. Um, we have updated the stormwater design since, um, we initially went in front of conservation commission. So, um, we've met the town and the state standards as far as stormwater goes, stormwater management. There are some basins proposed. There's a basin on the western side of the northern array, on the eastern side through here. There's one on the eastern side of this middle array. And then there are two basins down in this western array. Some of these dark lines here just represent small berms that we're constructing to, um, improve stormwater quality, to function as, as barriers for filter strips. There are drainage swales that will direct the stormwater into the basins. Yeah, so the site similar to the, the one that was just presented by Borrego, it's largely wooded. So, you know, other than the access area off of Park Drive and the existing easement, uh, there will be tree clearing required. And that's all within the limit of work line that's shown here. There's perimeter fence around each of the arrays, which is a requirement by national electric code. So it's a, a minimum seven foot high fence. Um, and similar to the other one, you know, happy to provide a Knox box or something like that to allow the fire department access, um, if it's ever needed. So that's the general overview. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Gentlemen of the board, I have a letter from somebody on Park Drive. Do you want me to read that first before you guys ask any questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Park Drive Solar Project. Dear Sir, as I am writing this letter with my concerns about the proposal of Park Drive Solar Project. I do not oppose the project, but I do have significant concerns about the use of Brooks Ave as the entrance to the project, both during the construction phase and after its completion. The plan shows using the paper street Brooks Ave off Park Drive as an entrance to the project. My property is located on 41 Park Drive, which directly abuts Brooks Ave. I am sure the other residents will be impacted by this project, but definitely none more than I will as my property directly abuts Brooks, excuse me, Books Drive Ave. There is approximately only 20 feet between my home and the proposed entrance access via Brooks Ave. As such, I am looking to protect my privacy property and my investments in the same. If this project gets approved with the access via Brooks Ave as proposed, I would ask my property and my privacy be protected. I am requesting that a permanent six foot white vinyl privacy fence be installed between Brooks Ave and my property before the project begins to protect my property from the construction vehicles, debris, and hopefully reduce the noise impact to my property. The privacy fence would also provide a physical border barrier between the access and road Brooks Ave to solar farm and my property after the construction phase of this project is completed. I would ask that the privacy fence run from Park Drive as close as possible to the rear property line of my property. I know the town and the project manager are concerned about all the budding neighbors to this project. So I'm asking that my request be considered and approved as part of this project if Brooks Ave is approved as an entrance from the Park Drive to the project. If you have, if you and you, the project manager would like to meet with me at my property to review my concerns, I have included my email address and phone number below. Again, I am only looking to protect my property privacy and property value if the project is approved. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to submit the letter to your consideration. Respectfully, Mark Morad. With that, we'll continue on. Gentlemen, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Pat.
Pat Hannon, uh, on behalf of the fire chief, did we deal with cisterns or, or fire hydrant?
So there's, there's an existing fire hydrant that's, um, right on uh, the main road here, which I believe is right here. Um, so I know we had initially had some discussions with the, the fire chief. And then it's, um, in some of our last correspondence, I think he was deferring to you, Pat. So, um, I know that cisterns were brought up. There was a question because this project, unlike the previous one, does have, you know, at least closer access to or closer proximity to a hydrant. Though there was nothing that was ever definitive, at least that I recall, so, um, you know, certainly, um, you know, willing to hear the thoughts, but I, I think that because the, the, um, existing hydrant was a little bit closer to this array than the previous one, it seemed like the 360 degree access around each array area was the primary concern.
He wanted, um, a fire hydrant within 500 feet of the array. And you've got multiple arrays and I'm just concerned about the distance to the end of the northern array. Or he will be. And then a question on your energy storage equipment. Do you have energy storage equipment for this project?
Yes, there is.
Can you just send me the manufacturer's information so I can check that out for the selectman?
Yep, absolutely.
And then your stormwater upgrades and plan being peer reviewed?
Yeah, so we'll just send everything through you, Pat, for that, to coordinate the, the peer review.
No, I, I think that the chairman wants, um, the proponents to deal directly with their peer review engineer who is.
SW call.
SW call.
Okay, that's fine.
Make your own arrangements directly and they'll just report back to the commission.
Okay, we might reach out to you, Pat, just for the first contact information on that.
Not a problem.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
I mean, same, same concern as, as the Morse's Lane one. This is a pretty substantial, uh, land clearing operation. You know, we want construction traffic to be respective of all the people on the road system that they're going to have to utilize when they move the, the chips, stumps and other vegetation off site. Likewise, when it comes to delivering, uh, the panels, the same, same thing. We just want them, we want a mechanism so that if a police detail becomes required, that they will fund the cost of that police detail to keep control of the traffic. A traffic management plan, uh, similar to the previous application, uh, seems like that's warranted on this, on this proposal also.
Well, this, this is a, this is a dead end road. So, you know, the road basically ends at the easement. I can actually probably bring this up on Google Earth. Hang on, let me stop sharing the screen and share it up. The one.
I mean, how, how is, how is this material going to leave the site? It's going to have to go on the road somewhere. And how, what's the hour of the panel is going to get delivered? Same deal. They'll have to use some kind of roadway system to get there.
Oh, absolutely. It will be through. I, I, my point being that it's, it's a dead end road on the eastern side. Can you see this area? So this outline in, in the light blue is the limits of work that I showed on the previous plan. But my point being is that, um, you know, there's just, there's not a, a lot of traffic down this road because it is a dead end. But, um, yeah, certainly. You know, as the, the previous applicant had discussed, the, the heaviest delivery times are during construction. You know, when you have construction equipment at the beginning to do. Construction equipment at the beginning to do all the earthwork, and then you've got. Deliveries of all the equipment that's related to it, um but then following construction, it's really down to. You know, probably two or three times per year for routine.
That 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 traffic, I'm I'm not too concerned about, but again, it is because it is a dead end street. People and kids are going to be used to no, no traffic on that at all, or very little. And uh the times when you are getting uh wood products leaving that site from land clearing operation. And you're getting panels delivered, uh. There needs to be a mechanism whereby if if a police detail is required to to keep the speeds down. Uh, and and respect the. Respect the residential. The residential use of of the existing dead end street that that be. I I'm not trying to create free work for the police, but on the other hand, I I would like to see some mechanism set up. Uh, so that if the traffic did become a problem uh very quickly, uh, we could get a police detail out there. Keep the speeds down.
So if we had some kind of arrangement where we could talk to the police department about, you know, say. And we can certainly deal directly with them, but to say to get them out there as needed, something like that might suffice.
Uh, as if the police chief is is happy with the way you leave it with him, then I'm I'm happy.
Okay.
I again, we just don't need cowboys running up and down this dead end street, trying to get as many loads of of chips as possible. Uh, delivered and offsite.
Okay, we can coordinate that. Thank you.
Can where your array is, Park Drive is where those houses are?
Correct.
And that goes all the way down to the right. That's Park Drive, right?
Yep.
And is there roadway down the end?
Yeah, if you could, if you could scroll a little bit more and show us the path that delivery and construction traffic would be. Uh, going through that.
Well, it's up Park Drive. Yep, all the way up Park Drive.
Yeah, it's it's up, it's up Park Drive. That's really the only way to get to the site. There's um. What you see on the eastern end here is part of that same utility easement that I mentioned before, so these. Dirt roads are are just, you know, part of that easement.
It's it's more the route from the trucks to the main highway system that uh our liability would be uh abused by.
Well, what I was looking for was there's a deep brook. Estates, I think, I I can't remember what they call it. It was uh in there somewhere. And they are proposing to put that subdivision together in the next year. I just didn't know if that one. Hey, you go to the end of Park Drive. I'm not sure where it is, right in that area maybe. The end of Park Drive is right there, sir.
Right here, yes, that's right.
So if you go across that, the deep brooks, I'll have to see it. We'll get it on the map, no problem.
That's where it is, Mark.
Right there at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, they put, they have a development for either fifteen or seventeen houses. I can't remember what it is. But that's coming into effect, so.
Could you scroll, could you, could you scroll the Park Drive? Uh, I I just want to see what the route is. I. My recollection of the street system out in that those Park Drive subdivisions is it's nothing is straight. Bunch of corners that you have to take. Yeah, let's see, okay, where? So if you could use that hand and run the hand over the roadway system. That that construction traffic would use, so if it comes up and you've got to take a hard left, then a hard right. Then, how do you get to the main, the main road? I mean, there's a number of of turns and intersections that that construction traffic has to go through.
Sure.
And that's, that's my point is we don't need, and certainly the neighbors don't need. Construction vehicles trying to roll through those intersections as quickly as possible.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that in more detail and talk to the police chief about it.
I I would, that would be appreciated.
Any other questions? Pro con from anybody? Pat, you all set? With that, we'll continue this hearing until uh fifteen minute section seven. Fifteen. On April twenty second. For fourteen forty seven Park Drive.
Mister Chairman, one, one request.
Yes, sir.
Can you share with us that letter that you received from the abutter? And uh if possible, what we'd like to do is just work directly with them to find.
Absolutely, sir.
Can I speak? I thought this was a a public hearing, so I was on tonight. Is it just a private hearing?
Nope, you can speak. Who is this?
Yes, this is Mark Morad from forty one Park Drive. I submitted the letter. I thank you very much for reading it.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
No, well, the letter stated uh my concerns with if Brook Ave is is utilized as the uh. Access road as it's planned, uh with my property being so close with the construction vehicles that'll be going in and out of there. The. I I like it. I know the developer said that they, the fire chief wanted them to. Uh, make twenty feet around each array. Does does that mean that the access road has to be twenty feet wide? When I went down and took pictures of the plan, it showed the access road fifteen feet wide. Is is the access road staying fifteen feet wide, or is it gonna be twenty feet wide?
It is, yeah. The only parts that are twenty feet wide are the areas that are next to the fence and around the array, around each area of the array.
That's internally, internally on the fence, is that correct?
That's right.
So, so where the. There's like a street cutout already, because it was a paper street that was. Made years ago when I, when they divided the land. There's like a a twenty-two or twenty-foot cutout. Next to my property, if you know what I'm saying, in the street, does that mean that they're gonna be, that's the exact part they're gonna be using? Right there, there where the cutout is of the street, they're gonna gravel it, and then that's gonna be the access.
That's right.
That's right.
Yes.
And the only other question I would have is, when you put the map up, and I see that the. And I know Eversource owns the power lines, but when I look at the power lines, they go between two of your arrays, not the western ray, but the other two. Goes directly to the arrays. Why couldn't we use the construction vehicles to get, to bring them in, the big vehicles? Why couldn't we come up through that road that's already there, already gravelled underneath the power lines? Instead of disrupting everybody on Park Drive, if you've never been down Park Drive, it's not really a dead end, because you can get from a cushioned avenue. To Middle Road from Park Drive by going through Deep Brook Estates. And when you come off of a cushioned avenue, you have to take a left. Off, uh, if you come down Bessie Street, you take a left, then you take a sharp right, then you take another sharp left, then you take another sharp right. Difficult maneuvering for a car, never mind big construction vehicles is, and I'm just trying to ease the. Amount of vehicles on the street if they could access that Eversource power line to bring in the big equipment. Even if they use Brook Ave in the future as just a a a road to. Repair the unit, which isn't too often. I'm sure after it's built, there's not much traffic that goes to solar arrays.
Yeah, that's right. There really isn't after construction. Um, I'd have to circle back on that. Mark with with Sin Karfa, and you know, they'd have to get back with Eversource. Um. You know, I know that they've looked into um crossing that easement. It can. Be a difficult process dealing with Eversource, but um something that we can certainly follow up on.
I think your challenge is correct, because I don't believe Eversource would give you access if you were gonna put a solar array in, but that's only my opinion.
I was just. Looking all to, I I I don't know the way it works. I think you must sell it to Eversource, don't you, when you produce the electricity on? I thought.
It's it's fed into their grid, um but but not necessarily sold to them.
Yeah.
No, um, I mean, the these are some of the challenges that the solar developers deal with and in the um. You know, just the arrangements with some of these utilities, but um certainly something I can follow up on.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, like I said, I invite any, you know, Mark or when I I happened to speak to Jim when I was down to town. About uh my property being so close to the access road and. I would meet with you on my property anytime or anything and. Or, you know, phone conversation, however you want to do it. You can get my number from Mark and uh we can go from there, but. Like I said, I'm only twenty feet from from Brook Ave, and I I'd appreciate if something was done for me.
I'm certain they'll, I'm certain they'll look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's Pat Hanon again. I'm sorry to bother you.
No bother, brother.
Rob, I I think I just heard that the entrance to the facility is only gonna be fifteen feet wide.
No, the the, well, the, so there's forty feet of roadway width here. Um, but I think the gravel um is, I'd have to check the exact dimensions, but it says shown on the plans. Whatever the width, I don't think it's the full forty feet.
But is there gonna be a twenty-foot gravel road accessing the site?
So the um.
The fire chief didn't indicate just around the arrays.
Okay, well, we'll look at that, and if if the fire chief wants twenty feet everywhere, then we'll have to widen that if it's fifteen feet now.
He needs twenty feet for his apparatus.
Got it.
Any sense to make the road bigger inside than than the entrance, so.
Yep, got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, gentlemen on the board? Anybody else pro con out there like to speak? With that, is there a motion to continue this till? Where's my, April twenty second at? Seven fifteen P M.
Motion to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call order, Rick.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mark, aye. With that, we will continue this on. Can I get a motion to go from? I have to go out of public hearing into regular hearing?
Actually, we're going right into another public hearing, right?
You're absolutely right, Rick.
All right, I would make a motion that we.
We keep going.
Public hearing for fourteen to forty-seven Park Drive and open up a public hearing. For the solar array at ten fifty-two Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, Rick.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Mark, aye. Here we are, site plan and solar special permit, ten fifty-two Main Street to Cushinget, Mass. At eight P M. I'm sorry, we're running. Too bad, what time is it? Almost nine. Uh, via Zoom meeting in accordance with the Cushinget General Bylaws, zoning article eight. Sections three point four and three point five in the Cushinget Subdivision Rules and Regulations. Article three, section three one three, to process an application for a site. Review and special permit for a one megawatt solar array proposed by Woodbridge. Renewables LLC. The engineer is SciTech Incorporated. Anybody from SciTech out there?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, uh, for the record, Steve Geo, so at SciTech.
Sorry to keep you waiting, sir. We're running a little behind, but.
Absolutely not a problem. Um, I understand completely. Um, with me tonight is Alan Clapp. Alan is with the Solar Development Company. And so, um, if I can share my screen, this is a proposed solar project. Uh, the address of the property is. Ten fifty-two uh Main Street. And here's an overview, um, with north to the top of the drawing or the top of the aerial photograph. You'll actually see the two sites that we. We're two Main Street property, and then the next hearing you have, which is the Cushing Lane project, which is this one here, but. The first project is this parcel here outlined in yellow, Main Street running generally north and south on the west side of the property. Uh, there's some open fields in the front, predominantly a wooded area. Which includes a vegetated wetland about here on the property. And then the area that is the subject of this particular array is this corner right here on the far east end, so. We're a couple thousand feet away from Main Street. Um, here's the uh mobile home park just to the north. And again, as I indicated, this is Cushing Lane coming down and terminating generally in this location here at the present time. So the project is focused in this area where access and the interconnection will be through. The um. Cushing Lane portion of the site, so same orientation on the uh diagram before you hear. Shrink this down just a little bit. Uh, so again, for orientation, north to the top of the plan, we have Cushing Lane here to the east. And so the access would pick up at the end of Cushing Lane. Uh, travel a little bit further south, then make a right turn and then enter the project in this location. Um, this area represents about six acres of the thirty-nine and a half acre site. Um, as we um developed the plan for this site, we looked at uh the topography, so you'll see there is topographic data. Uh, presented for the project. We also did uh initially a mapping of the wetland area, and we do have a filing in front of. Conservation. We've had one meeting with them so far, but the wetlands are located on the west side of the proposed activity. This is this lighter green shading uh represents the wetland area as mapped out uh for the project. The darker green represents an area of wooded area that we would not be disturbing um against the wetlands side, so that we. Maintaining natural buffer to the well and system itself. And then the system itself would be within a fenced in area, a seven-foot fence surrounding the uh development. And again, the access coming in off of Cushing, and then. We created this turnout so there would be an ability for fire apparatus or trucks to make the maneuver. To uh come into this portion of the site. Um, the modules are shown in this fashion. This is approximately one megawatt uh project. And because of the natural topography, we've got kind of a drainage divide here in the middle of the site. Some of the drainage runs to this corner, the balance of it runs to the back. And so we have developed two stormwater mitigation areas, one in the northeast corner. We're creating a very shallow berming area here. And then in the uh far western edge, we're creating a berm to intercept any surface water uh off of this site. Uh, detaining it and then allowing it to filter through and out into the well and system. Uh, where the water wants to go at the present time. So the system is balanced to mitigate drainage flows. Uh, we've got good access. The applicant has been in communication with the fire chief. And um we are providing clear access around the array, um so there is a clear zone. Completely around the system between the system and the fence. Um, and we've also discussed the placement of a cistern system on the property. Uh, similar to what we did on the ten fifty Main Street project last summer. Um, and we are proposing at this time, one of two options. We're looking for the chief to. Uh, give us some direction, because the second project we're gonna discuss this evening. Is located here, a little bit to the south and east of this project. Uh, we didn't know if the chief wanted to see a joint fire tank, a single cistern, that would be a little larger sized than what we might normally. Provide. Uh, we were originally gonna pl- propose a two thousand gallon cistern for both projects. And whether it made sense uh to have a single cistern here, probably around three thousand, thirty-five hundred gallons. Uh, that would then be able to provide uh fire uh water supply to either location in the event of an emergency, so. Uh, we are working with the chief on on that. As with all these projects, the security fence will have a a gate, in this case, in this location here. We would have a Knox box at the gate to secure the development uh from unauthorized access. And the interconnection itself would run from the site back out and down Cushing Lane. That's a pretty brief overview. Uh, we are maintaining an undisturbed wooded area on the north side. Um, on this edge here, we are creating a berm to uh again contain the stormwater, so we. Do not have uncontrolled water onto our butter uh here to the east or to. Uh, here to the east or to the north, and there is no drainage directed to the south, and this is the natural drainage flow here, so. This is kind of a unique site where we have basically no earthwork occurring anywhere through here. Uh, it is a wooded site, so we will be clearing this area. And again, this is about six and a half acres of the forty acre site. Um, but the only grade changes proposed are very minor, about a two to three foot high berm on this edge. And a two to three foot high berm on this edge, other than that, all of the national topography will be maintained through here, which will allow us to maintain the existing drainage patterns. I think that's uh, the proposal as it stands now, and be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen on the board?
I mean, there's another land clearing operation, uh, traffic considerations down Cushing Lane. You know, obviously, we don't want construction vehicles bombing up and down Cushing Lane, uh, creating a hazard or inconvenience for the butters.
Yeah, one thing we've, one thing we've done in other solar projects, especially where it is a a residential laneway. Is make sure that there is signage placed, that no construction vehicles be allowed to park anywhere on Cushing Lane. In this case, they're able to bring the equipment in here, create this access point. And because the applicant is the same applicant for this project as this one, we control not only this parcel, but we would have control on this parcel. So there's really going to be a lot of area available to stockpile uh, equipment. Uh, make sure we're not interfering with the public way or or parking uh, construction vehicles on the public way, so I think this. Particular combination of sites works really well in that regard.
It's, it's more the speed of construction traffic trying to get product off of the wooded sites along Cushing Lane, I mean, that's not a very heavily traveled road. And during a short period during construction, it's going to be uh, quite a shock, I believe, to some of the residents.
Okay.
There needs to be an accommodation such that if it becomes a problem, that the provision for police detail or whatever is uh, is. Available to uh, control the speed of construction vehicles going up and down Cushing Lane.
Okay.
Rick, my name is Alan Clapp, with next representing uh, the development of this portion of for Woodbridge Renewables. And and like the other applicants, we're happy to work with the police chief to develop anything, but I I think it's um. It's important to note here that in Cushing Lane, you know, is a straight shot, and there is plenty of room. You know, on the sites for parking and places for them to go and things of that nature, so I think this is yeah, a controllable situation. Best of my knowledge, and and to speak to the tree clearing portion too, this, this is actually one fifth the size of the other project you were looking at, this is. Roughly five acres, five to six acres versus thirty acres of tree clearing, so that that portion of it will happen substantially uh, less than the others. Again, this is a framework for comparison.
Yeah, I, I, I guess the problem is you're talking to somebody who's fights a constant battle with delivery trucks. Uh, and and FedEx and Amazon Prime and post office, just going up and down streets that are are. Heavily populated in areas where you have kids running around, grandkids running around. Uh, again, Cushing Lane is going to be, is is not a real heavily traveled street, it's going to be a surprise to people.
Agreed.
Have to deal with, and and, you know, this only, I, I watched one get built on the corner of. Of of uh, Middle Road uh, back in the Cutino's operation, and you know, other than, and there was no, not very much clearing that went on for that one, almost none. Other than delivery of the panels and getting rid of the wood products, I mean, other than that, there's not too much traffic that goes on, but during those periods. Uh, it also when I'm concerned, those are what I'm concerned about. I I'm not talking about having a police detail there through the whole course of the project, it's not necessary, but there, there again, needs to be a provision uh, to. Generate some respect for the people living along Cushing Lane. By the, the construction drivers. That's all.
All set, Rick?
Almost set, yep.
Brian, you got anything?
Oh, I'm good.
Anybody in the public out there would like to say anything?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Pat.
Just a quick question for Mr. Giosa, um, same as I asked the other folks, is there an energy um, storage equipment for this project?
Uh, yes, there is.
Could I get the information on that, please, just so I could check out?
Yeah, we actually submitted the uh, the spec sheets with the application, but we can definitely make them available directly to your office.
If you could send it to me electronically, that would be great.
Okay, nope, no problem.
And then um, I think I saw you at the last meeting, and you had indicated that the stormwater management plan was done and it had been sent for peer review?
Well, we filed it, our stormwater management plan with the planning board, we're not sure what the planning board uh, had wanted us to do with peer reviews, since this is technically the first public hearing on this project. Um, so whether that goes directly from the planning board or it comes from us directly to the peer review consultant. Uh, we're going to defer to the planning board on that, if they want us to, we're definitely going to do that.
I think that'll be easier for us on the planning board, if you do it, you could get a hold of S W Cole, you will work with them.
Yep, oh, no, I know how to reach them, so that's fine.
Okay, gentlemen, is that okay with you guys on the board?
That's just fine.
Brian? Okay, Pat, you okay with that?
Yes, yeah, you're, you're the chairman, that's great.
It's okay, but listen, you guys are the brains, I just got the mouth.
I'm all set, thank you very much.
Good.
With that, is there anybody out in the public would like to say anything?
Uh, yes, sir, through you, Chair, Mr. Chair, um, and Mr. Kudo, and I'm representing lot twenty six E on Cushing Lane.
Okay, we're, we're.
Yeah, right there, that little, that little spot in between the two solar farms.
Okay.
Right now, I'm in the process of speaking to Mr. Clapp on trying to uh, work out some kind of agreement. Um, I I let them know that I would be open to some kind of lease or a purchase of the property if it would help the project. But if that doesn't, if that doesn't work out, uh, one of the things, I'm not so concerned with the Cushing Lane project as I am with this one. Um, this one here would, it's, it's going to have utility poles running along the whole side of my property. And we're actually looking at putting two houses on the property right now, so I know you guys see just an open lot, but it would be. Potentially two residences soon, so one of the things I would like to ask for is if there could be like a fifty foot buffer of trees. Between my property and this solar array. Um, I mean, the owner of the solar array has twenty acres of tree buffer, it would be nice if I had fifty feet to at least screen it. Um. But I'm not sure if that's something you guys would be able to help me out with.
I'm sure Mr. Giosa can look at it, Steve, is there trees along there, I see?
Well, if you, yeah, if you could, if this is the area where there, there are no poles anywhere in this area here, uh, but in this area here, the poles are coming down the edge of the um. Proposed access drive, and we can definitely look at whether or not, I mean, obviously, we were not planning on clearing any of this area here. Uh, but I would venture to say that's probably about a twenty foot buffer.
I'm looking on, I'm looking at the backside.
You're talking about on this side here, okay, so there's a drainage swale, I know that runs along the back of your property, runs through here. And continues on through, it kind of picks up the drainage from the White's Farm property, goes under the drive here, uh, that we would be creating and continues on through. Um, I'm not sure how much flexibility we have on this side of the site, but we can look at, maybe there's an inability to do some plantings. That would create more of an evergreen buffer on this edge to to give you that visual screen. In in the event that you do sell the property and someone decides they want to clear all the way to the back. Then, yeah, we can definitely look at.
Right, and that, that's the other thing I'm concerned about too, is uh, stormwater drainage, because right now, if you look at, I believe it's the north side of the property. All the water runs down the north side of the property across Cushing Lane and into a pipe across three houses on Cushing Lane, so. If there's any added stormwater runoff, it's going to affect me, but it's also going to affect all the neighbors, and they're going to be looking at me, um, saying, hey, why is there so much water coming off your land?
No, that's an excellent point, so basically what we have is right where I'm pointing on the drawing here, this is the ridge point, from here. The water breaks one of two ways, it either drains to the west towards the wellins, or it does come towards your property. So the natural flow of water is down this way, and I'm going to assume at this point, it gets intercepted by this ditch and and continues on down this way. What we're proposing is to take that water, make sure it's still going to have to go the same direction, but. Because we're clearing the trees, we have had to create a mitigation point, which is here. And this mitigation point will slow the water down, allow some of it to seep into the ground. And actually, we, we've intentionally discharged in this direction to create more of a buffer to your property. And then it'll eventually will come down to where it naturally wants to go, which is feeding into this drainage channel and then out. But we have detained it, and that's what the, the planning board has asked us to do, is submit our analysis to an outside engineer. Just to make sure they agree with our assumptions about how the drainage is going to work and that we're going to properly control the water. And so it does not flood your property or any of the people to the north, or frankly, to the east or the south, so that will be looked at by an independent engineer. They'll either agree with us or not, uh, hopefully they do, if they do, then we have properly controlled the runoff, if not, we'll tweak the design to. Satisfy them, and I know this board will not grant us an approval until that independent engineering review is completed.
Is that okay with you, sir, can you hear that?
Yeah, a- at this time, because I'm assuming that we're just going to pretty much continue to continue it for a little while, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then I'm fine with that, I don't want to hold you guys up.
No, that's fine, because the next one is going across from your land, I believe, is that correct, Steve?
It's diagonal to to Mr. Kudo's property, yes.
Okay, gentlemen on the board, any other questions for this particular project at? Ten fifty two Main Street?
All set.
Oh, all set.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing? To? Give me a second. Seven thirty on April twenty second. Was just to Main.
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark, aye. With that, we'll continue it on. And Steve, why don't you just sit right there, we're going to another public hearing, this is a site. Plan review and solar special permit, Cushing Lane assesses map lot seven. Excuse me, map seven, lot twenty six, Acushnet. Zoom meeting in accordance with the Acushnet general bylaws, zoning article eight, section three point four and five. And the Acushnet subdivision rules and regulations, article three, section three one three. To process an application for site plan review and special permit for a two megawatt solar array proposed by White's. White's Farm Incorporated, the engineer is SciTech Engineering. All yours, Steve.
Okay, once again, for the record, Steve Giosa and uh, Alan Clapp is also here for this particular project. Let me once again share my screen, and we'll um. Get rid of this particular site and. Um, we're going to go to the Cushing Lane project, so this is the Cushing Lane project, north in this case is uh. To the left side of the screen, in this direction, the project we just discussed is. Um, basically, oops, um, in this general location, just below Mr. Kudo's property who just spoke, is this piece here. And Cushing Lane comes down in a southerly direction here, currently terminates here, turns into a driveway. And then this is the driveway access we just discussed, leading to the ten fifty two Main Street project. And the parcel you see here um, is the White's Farm property, it is about twenty seven and a half acres in size. Again, with this project, as with the other, we did a topographic survey of the site. We identified the well and resource areas, which again are the lighter green shading, and this represents the well in line. And you can see what we did is we intentionally kept the uh, array outside the one hundred foot buffer zone of the wetlands, this is the one hundred foot buffer zone line. Kind of scallop shaped line running through here. Um, and then the darker shading represents the existing wooded area that would remain as an undisturbed buffer. Uh, between any of the clearing or any of the existing field area and the uh, adjacent uh, wetland system. Uh, the project, as I said, is a twenty seven and a half acre site, this is a little bit bigger project than the last one, this is about two megawatts. Uh, so we're occupying about twelve acres of land here. Uh, similar um, configuration in terms of access, the access coming off Cushing Lane. Uh, we have a access drive running all along the, this would be the westerly edge of the project. And then we've maintained a clear zone completely around the backside, you can see the fence line, got a pretty extensive area of open area for emergency access. Around the facility. Again, gated access uh, coming into the site, and and that gate would be in this location here. Uh, so again, if someone comes in and they came the wrong way, there's room to pull over, back out. And return to Cushing Lane, so we're not making someone back all the way back down here. You notice a little cul-de-sac here, that was something we discussed at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Whitehead. Received planning board approval a number of years ago for the cul-de-sac development. And I guess that's one question we'll have for the board after I finish the presentation, is to whether or not you had the opportunity to. Review the definitive plan that Romanelli uh, survey had re- reproduced, given the fact the original subdivision plan was never recorded. But before we get to that, the, the clearing would occur of the overgrown field, so this is all an existing field. Uh, through here, but it's somewhat overgrown. As with the other project, we have no proposed grade changes running through the site, so we're working. Exactly with the natural topography, the land generally drains uh, from west to east. And in this case, we have an erosion control barrier, the heavier dashed line. Running along the entire eastern edge of the construction activity, again, to protect the wetlands. Again, the equipment pads, there will be storage here, similar equipment to the other uh, facility, so we will provide that uh, to Mr. Hannon. And again, as with the other project, we would provide either a separate two thousand gallon cistern for fire protection on this site. Or at the discretion of the fire chief. Possibly locate a slightly larger tank, maybe in this area, to provide joint access to both facilities, so. That's a detail we are still uh, working out, as I mentioned earlier. Fairly straightforward, again, no real grade changes, and in this case, not a lot of clearing, it's really getting rid of the overgrowth, the overgrown field. It's again formerly cultivated land, so uh, we've got a good soil conditions to establish ground cover. And um, as part of the project, we would, um, we're showing the cul-de-sac development here on the end of Cushing Lane, but. Again, the cul-de-sac was part of that approved subdivision we talked about, and I know uh, we had asked the, the board if they were comfortable with re endorsing that subdivision mile hour, because the original. Has been misplaced, and nobody is able to find it, uh, so we would like to get that part of the title information cleaned up and just get that on record. Uh, and I know the board made a, I think, a recommendation, they were going to. Approach, I think, S W Cole about taking a look at the original subdivision plan, comparing it to the duplicate that. Mr. Romanelli put together to make sure that uh, we were showing an exact duplicate of the original plan. Mr. Romanelli had done the original subdivision uh, for Mr. White, and so therefore it made sense for him to. Access his computer system and just create a, a duplicate, hopefully for the board to be comfortable signing, so. Those are the two issues associated with this project, obviously, the main solar project, and then um, the disposition of the subdivision itself.
Gentlemen? Gentlemen?
I mean, the fire, the fire chief is requested on every other one of these solar arrays. He is 20-foot wide or path around the perimeter of the entire site. I'm assuming they're gonna ask the same for this one. I would, where is the storm drainage from the other project coming from?
Okay, the other project is, oops, right in this corner here.
Okay.
Get rid of that. Right in this corner here. So the, the flow in this area is there's a drainage channel. I'm sure it was created as part of the field development at one time. Comes across here and drains this way. And this topography here drains this way, where this topography drains this way.
Down to the well. Okay.
Any other questions? Pro or con? Anybody? Brian, you all set?
I'm all set.
Rick, you all set?
Yeah, I am. I mean, whereas a primarily open site, there's not gonna be a lot of tree work necessary and material is gonna be parked off site with this one.
Anybody from the public out there like to say anything?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Anthony Kudo, lot 26E. I just have, well, a couple of questions. I, I don't have many concerns with this one. But if, if the other plan didn't go through, assuming that all the equipment would be located closer to where that cul-de-sac is, wouldn't it be a bunch of telephone poles running along my property, correct? Because they wouldn't have to tie the other project in.
Yeah, I don't know where the poles would wanna go. Beyond that, there's an equipment pad here and here. They likely would be going down in this location, but they definitely would be further from your property.
Yep. I would also like to see the equipment pads moved a little farther away from my property lines. But that's just another thing that I'd be looking for. But then I guess, I guess lastly, they, they keep talking about a subdivision plan. But it appears to me that any research that I do, there's no subdivision plan that exists. So they might not have legal right-of-way to the property.
Well, again, there, the lawyers have looked at the right-of-way issue. What happened is that's the reason you don't find the subdivision plan on record is that there is no subdivision plan on record. It was reviewed through a public hearing. There was a definitive plan approved. For what you see here, this cul-de-sac was approved by the planning board a number of years ago. And somewhere between the endorsement of that plan by the planning board, we have a copy of the endorsed plan. But we don't have the original mile hour film that has to go to the registry. And that registry never received that original mile hour film. So in the end, we're looking to see if the board is gonna be comfortable reendorsing that. But the subdivision still stands, assuming the board does reendorse the plan and we put it on record. So but you're correct. That's why you don't see it on, in the registry.
Through you again, Mr. Chair. Does, does that plan not expire after six months if it's a definitive plan?
I don't have an answer for that one.
Well, I, I can answer that. No, what happens is you're supposed to record mile hours within six months. That does, by not recording it, does not void the subdivision vote. The subdivision is valid. This, what you're maybe confusing is zoning protection. So a subdivision affords an owner protection on zoning changes. But in this case, we're not looking to preserve any zoning change. So any zoning changes that may have gone into effect have no longer any standing on that particular subdivision because it's been more than eight years. And so the subdivision gives you zoning protection, but that's it. The recording of the mile hour, it, it has happened numerous times where someone does not record a document. We have to go back to the agency who endorsed the document. Sometimes it's a conservation document, sometimes it's a planning. And we get it reendorsed and it goes to the registry and, and that closes out that part of the technical process.
I do remember that coming in. I just, it's been so many years.
We've, we've had, we've had to reendorse a couple of plans over, over the years, not many. Maybe two or three in the last 20 years or so. Yeah, it does have to be filed within a certain date of, of the approval or it has to be reendorsed by the, the planning board or other approval.
Okay. And not, and not to hold you guys up. If you're gonna just continue, we can talk about it later. That's fine by me.
We are gonna continue it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Pro or con? With that, is there a motion to continue this public hearing?
Motion to continue the public hearing to a time and date to be told to us by the chairman.
7:45 on April 22nd.
So moved.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, am I correct to assume we should be filing this with?
SW Cole?
SW Cole as well.
Yes, I would say so.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have to go through a roll call. Is there a motion to continue this? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
With that, we will continue on. Don't tell me we're getting close here. Hold on. I apologize for the time. It is 9:30. And we do have 301 Perry Hill. Mr. David, are you out there, sir? Maybe David fell asleep.
No. Yeah, yeah.
Where'd I put these now? All right ahead, Dave.
Well, I was looking at the screen share. So I have to zoom in on my computer. Just take me a moment.
It's okay. I need a cup of coffee.
So can I screen share?
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, I know you're not, you're not controlling things, Rick.
I'm not. I have no control over anything.
All right. I'll wait till the chairman's back with his coffee.
Go for it.
Okay. So I have a series of, of plans on the same PDF that I can just scroll through. The first one that you're looking at is the back in 2006 by the planning board. The highlighted lots are what Mark Francois owns. The, everything to the west and south and west, his brother Dean owns. So Dean, you know, they basically split the property down the middle when they purchased it. And then they came back in with this plan. And so Dean's property was subdivided into three lots, five, six, and seven. Mark, one, two, three, and four. You can see Mark's house is on parcel number one. So this is what we have now, what we're dealing with. Now, that's on record. So let me see. Too fast. Trying to not go too fast here. All right. So, so this is a view of the same thing. A little simpler view of the existing lots. You can see Mark's lot, which is, his house is right here. And if he were to go forward with what's on paper now, proves he would, there would be three homes built. One across the street from him or across the, the road. One to the north, north of that house, and then one to the rear of his house. And in order to accomplish that, he would have to build a common driveway, starting at Perry Hill Road, 16-foot wide. It would run up the property line eight feet off of Dean's property. It would cross over the, the current ancient way. And it would, it would run off the west side, something like, say, four or five feet off of that, parallel to the ancient way, and then have a hammerhead at the end. So essentially, we'd have two gravel roads side by side. Doesn't make much sense to me. That's not what we would like to do. This concept is a scaled-down version of the last meeting when we discussed building just a gravel road for the three lots that exist, that are building lots now, but changing them from retreat lots to regular lots by putting in a 50-foot-wide road layout, beginning at Perry Hill Road, perpendicular to Perry Hill Road, running down the property line and then overlaying it over the ancient way. Under this scenario, we would build a 20-foot-wide gravel road, which would service the three existing homes. And you can see the homes would be located in a different location. Be across the street like from Mark's house like before. The first, these two on the right would pretty much be in the same spot. But the difference would be that the third new house we built on the left side at the end of the hammerhead and, and not abutting Dean's property. And that retreat lot behind Mark's property would just be one big giant lot. And that would be it, you know? So it would, it's, it's still, in the end, he ends up with three lots, gravel road. And that, that gravel road would be 20 feet and it would basically widen the existing ancient way and then end with a hammerhead. And then the way would continue on to the trip property. Under this scenario, nobody could do any future development in the, on the trip property because we, we are dead-ending, you know, the layout right at this location right here. So this is kinda how we left it at the last meeting. There is one more concept I'd like to show you. This is bringing a 50-foot-wide road layout, same concept with a hammerhead at the end. The only difference is this would provide 22 feet of pavement instead of 20 feet of gravel. But under this scenario, he would want the fifth lot to pay for the pavement. This is obviously his desired. It's five instead of six is, is preferred layout because pavement obviously is a better selling point for the future. It would still remain private. We could put covenants on, on the property that runs in perpetuity. We could put the road is, is one lot, is an association lot owned by all folks. So it can never be turned over to town. There's, there's all kinds of legal mechanisms we could do. But this, this is what his preferred would be. Obviously, we're showing a 50-foot-wide layout, but the road would still be shifted eight feet off of the lot line, which is really the setback for common driveways. We follow that concept. And everything would be paved. We'd institute some, some stormwater into the program if we did this one. So we're here to discuss what your thoughts are between this, this option and the four lots gravel.
Gentlemen? How about the four, four lots hardtop?
I mean, we, we started off with the, the four retreat lots. So he certainly had, well, certainly had the, without getting into the retreat lot discussion that we had on Peckham Road, it would seem that that's a very similar situation to Peckham Road. And where the, the board looked at a retreat lot with the common driveway. There was a problem with the bylaw interpretation to, to do any common driveway, I guess, in town the way it stands right now. And the board was looking at, board finally granted some, some waivers for a limited, a limited subdivision, if you will, for lack of a better term. I don't know. This, there's pluses and minuses to, to both the four and the five lot one. You know, I don't really have any strong inclination either way. Obviously, the paved road is easier to plow in the wintertime and less maintenance than a dirt road. There's a trade-off of the one, the one extra lot, but you get a paved road instead of the gravel. I don't know. I think either proposal is a reasonable one. As long as the covenant gets put on the properties that the town will not be asked to, to accept that as a roadway unless it is brought up to complete subdivision standards. That's just my thoughts. I, I think both are reasonable proposals, considering the property and what was done elsewhere. That's my opinion.
Brian, you got anything?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with Rick. I mean, there is a trade-off, you know, you, when you are getting the asphalt drive, which I think is also a better, I think is a better outcome.
This is a private road. Is that correct, David?
It would remain private, but Mark has, has told me that he would, he would offer the farmer at the end of Trips Way, the right to use, to, the right to use the whole paved way so that it makes life easier for him. Obviously, it turns into gravel as you get to the end, but that's what it is now. So yes, it would remain private and it'd be maintained by those five property owners that would use it and, and Mr. Tripp in the end, obviously, would be able to use it too. He'd still maintain his rights to use the inch away if he wished. But if he wanted to go paved route one day and gravel the next, he'd knock himself out.
Evening, gentlemen. This is Maria. I'm the trustee of the farm in the back. This is the first time I'm seeing this proposal. But, and just recently, where we made aware of the proposed subdivision, which unbeknownst to us, that was occurring. But
This is the first time it's come out, ma'am.
This, this plan, but the previous one in, in February, when you had your previous meeting, there was a different proposal.
Correct.
That's what I'm referring to. That was the first time we became aware of the subdivision.
Okay.
I, I'm just confused on how this road is going to be accessing or this private way. What, when I purchased the property, on my deed, it says that I have access to, to the back property, which was landlocked, but was left in a way that we would not be landlocked, that I would have exclusivity to, to my property.
You, you'll pass the cul-de-sac down there, man? That big house in the back?
That's right.
Okay.
So now you're going, you're proposing to make my right-of-way to my property a road, not a driveway anymore, a road for five houses. With mine would be six houses. This is not a driveway anymore. This is a road. My concern here is the safety of, of travel on this road with five different houses, two, three plus cars on each of these houses. Also, my concern is the maintenance because currently the maintenance on this road is not maintained whatsoever. It's maintained by me. So it's, it's a dirt road currently, which, you know, we, we clear the potholes. We clear, you know, cuz we're traveling it, you know, no problem. I, I maintain it, but not rightfully so. It should not be maintained by me. But my concern is the plowing. No one plows it. I plow it. So now you're gonna have five houses. Where's, where's gonna be the guarantee that these five houses are gonna maintain this road? This is not a, this is not a driveway anymore. It's a road. And I'm concerned about the safety, about having these two roads side by side and how they cross each other as you travel. And I'm concerned about the safety, about having these two roads side by side and how they cross each other as you travel into, you know, my piece. There's lots of collision points here that I see as an issue, so I don't see this as a safe road, not a driveway.
Taken into consider, we have not made any arrangements to accept these yet, you understand that, ma'am?
I do, but I'm just, you know.
You're voicing your opinion, I understand.
I understand, well, I'm just claiming this is the concern that I have. It's no longer a driveway when you're adding five houses and with mine would be six. So.
Can I try to answer some of her questions, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Francois.
Uh, go right ahead, sir.
Hi, I've spoken to Tony about this, he was well aware that I was planning on asphalting. The driveway and, and he was also aware that I was planning on subdividing. But that being said, I totally agree with what you're saying, that the driveway right now is not maintained. The driveway right now is a disaster, it's always full of potholes. The driveway right now is maybe eight to ten feet wide in certain areas. The main reason why I'd like to go through with this project is that this road would be a fifty-foot wide layout. It would be twenty-two feet of asphalt, no more potholes, no more dirt road. It would be all nice asphalt, two lanes going back and forth. The five houses on my property, the, the five, oh, if, if we went with the five. We would have a homeowners association, which this homeowners association would be responsible for plowing the driveway. The lawn on the side of the driveway, the, the, the mowing of the lawn and any other maintenance. Of this road would be with the homeowners association. I have asked nothing of you or, or, or your brother Tony, I haven't asked anything. You would benefit from having the asphalted road, never having to have to maintain and fix it. And if need be, the association would take care of that, you would not be responsible for any of that. You would actually benefit quite nicely from this asphalt road.
I don't feel that I am, Mark, and I, I appreciate your, your concern with feeling that it would benefit us, but. It, it does not, because my concern, as I mentioned to you, is that it's no longer a driveway, it turns into a road. So if it's, if it's gonna be a road, then it needs to be maintained by the town of Acushnet, where it's plowed by the town of Acushnet, the trash is picked up by the town of Acushnet. It should not be just a driveway with a home association, I do not agree with that.
Well, you were trying to like, I know where you're coming from, ma'am, but this is a private way. Unless.
It's a private way, you're right, so the, the proposed plot, plotting of this property was with retreat lots, where the retreat lots would have their own driveways.
No, ma'am, that's not correct, I'll go back to the, I'll go back and show you the retreat lots, the retreat lots.
I'm sorry, David, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to make a fuss here whatsoever, what I'm just trying to point out is that, Mark, you know, this is your property and. You know, you have the right to do with what you want, subdivide it, do what you want. But my claim here is that I don't feel that it's gonna be a safe road and it's no longer a driveway. It turns into a public road with several cars, so that's five houses. Or six houses, I should say, times three, two cars, what are we talking, close to twenty cars traveling on this? We can't, and then this, that, you're talking about, you know, then we could keep going down the line and say there's gonna be young drivers, kids traveling fast in this road. Who's gonna, who's gonna be patrolling this road? Because it's a driveway. So that's why I'm concerned here, I'm concerned about the maintenance.
I understand, and my engineer David could probably explain it better than I could, but at the moment, I have three retreat lots that have been approved. For, since two thousand and six, so. If there was another dirt road put in to access those three lots, it would be another gravel road. Your, the, the, the existing road that you use now would still be only eight to ten feet wide, it would still be full of potholes and never maintained. And I would only have.
No, that's not true, I do maintain it, Mark, as you know.
You maintain half of it, yes, you do.
I maintain that whole section up to where butts Mark's property.
Correct, but if I go to access the three retreat lots, it's still only on one driveway. It's just another dirt driveway that's gonna abut the existing driveway. I'm looking to asphalt it and make it much better, I guess you could say, for, for everybody.
I, I don't see it as a better way, no, I, I do not, it's not a safe way, it's not a safe way for everyone and all those houses that are gonna be put in place there.
Well, on a, on three retreat lots, you have to have forty-foot frontage on the front and you can have one common driveway for three retreat lots, am I correct, David?
That's correct.
Okay, so legally you can do that.
This plan shows, um, this retreat lot plan, I mean, uh, shows the common driveway. It, it shows it right up against, right here, right along the ancient way. So it, it's the same layout that was shown on this that we would, we would do if, if this was the desired result for everybody. You know, this is something he has a right to do, which is build a sixteen-foot wide gravel driveway, which would cross over the existing gravel driveway now. And run parallel to it five feet away, so you'd have two gravel driveways side by side. I, I don't see that as a desired result. Versus what we're proposing, which is providing pavement, which is long-term, something you get thirty years out of. And, and the town does not take over every road that is approved by the planning board. There has to, they have to be, a road has to be petitioned to the town and it has to be approved by town meeting. There are private roads all over this, all over the town.
I agree a hundred percent that on a retreat lot, it's a private road. The three homes have to maintain the driveway, there is paperwork put into the position where they have to maintain it. They all agree upon fixing it, they have to take their trash out to the main street to pick it up. That's the law of a common driveway with three retreat lots. So gentlemen, where are we at, we have to. Look at this, take another walkabout, what do you wanna do, Rick, Brian? Everybody fall asleep?
No, we're, we're, we're thinking, I mean, it's a.
No problem, I understand.
It's, it's another proposal, I, I, like I said, I think, I think both of them are reasonable ways to develop the back of. This, this man's property, again, it's very, this is a very similar situation to what was approved on Peckham Road. With the exception that there's the, the opportunity to get it all paved, albeit with one extra lot. I don't, I think that's a perfectly reasonable way to develop this piece of property, that's.
Brian?
Yeah, I have to agree with that. I think it, it is a good, it's a better trade-off. You know, the one extra lot gets you, you know, an asphalted driveway. Going in there, which will be much easier to maintain.
How do you put that extra lot in there?
The, it essentially becomes the, uh, a lot behind Mark's house, which, um, under the retreat lot proposal.
Okay, I see it, no, I see, back up that one, one more time, David. That's, that's the, no, that's three, where's the one with the five lots?
This is the retreat lot. So there was supposed to be a house behind Mark, you see the perp test holes that were done? So under the five lots, essentially we're putting the house in that same spot.
So in essence, the three lots to the right hand, the two lots to the right and the one up above are on a common, common driveway. And the one to the left is on its own driveway, correct?
No, under the five lot, this concept, this would be a roadway approved through the definitive subdivision process. We would file a definitive subdivision plan, we would incorporate drainage for the pavement. And once this project's completed, they are all now in our plans, they would all get their access off of the paved road.
Is that a Form C?
That would be a Form C subdivision, yes.
Now, the, you know, I guess my only question, David, is that, are, are you confident that you can work some drainage in here? That the conservation commission is going to, uh, be happy with?
I'm fairly confident, we have two spots, one on the first lot here on the right, we have some, you know, an area here that we had sketched in a drainage pond. And then that would help us capture the, the, um, the hammerhead coming back down the hill, because drainage comes that way. And then the rest of the road would come in this, this spot over here that we have.
Okay, so you've got, you've got a way to accommodate it, that hopefully the conference, conservation commission would be satisfied with, okay.
I've got a question, so currently I'm traveling in the beginning of Dean's property. And then I'm gonna be crossing over into this new, new road, is that what you're saying, David?
That's, you can continue to use it that way if you wished, but what Mark has conveyed to me and he's on the line, you can tell me if I'm wrong, that he would. He could allow you to use the entire paved road. He could grant you that aneeasement to use that portion of the road with, with no obligation for any maintenance. So you would, you would get pavement all the way until you get past that hammerhead. So you'd have probably what, another hundred and.
I'm losing. Ground here, so you're gonna give me pavement up to the hammerhead and then you're gonna give me twenty feet of, of gravel?
No, nothing beyond the, beyond the, the hammerhead, it, it will remain as it is today.
Why, why don't you give me pavement all the way to the end of my road?
Because we don't need to build the road all the way to the end. We had that proposal out on paper as a six lot.
But, okay, but this is my right of way, so you're telling me I should like this proposal because you're paving my road and I should be happy? So you're gonna pave my road three quarters of the way, then you're gonna leave me, I don't know, ten, twenty feet of unpaved road?
How much, how, how much feet is there from the end of the cul-de-sac to the?
The hammerhead is a cul-de-sac.
There you go.
It's, um, it's probably, I'd say at least a hundred and eighty feet.
Yeah. So, is what I'm gonna be happy about, I'm gonna be happy by a three-quarter of a road, a paved road, really?
But the alternative, are you saying you'd be happier if we built a sixteen-foot wide gravel driveway? That paralleled your road, that you want, the road that you use? And it's side by side and you, you're left alone the way it is now? Is that, that's a better plan than you getting twenty-two feet of pavement, two-way, uh, drive in and out up to that point? I, I just.
I don't understand.
I'm having trouble.
No, I, absolutely, it's like I'm having trouble, so you're, you're proposing that this is such a great plan by him gaining another lot. But you're only gonna take, but that you're paving my road or the, my, you know, the access to my property, but you're only gonna take me three-quarters of the way for him to gain another lot.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to asphalt over a thousand feet at twenty-two feet wide.
Right, to gain another property, to gain.
That property is only to pay for that, that's property will be, all that money will go towards that road. It's very expensive and you're not, I'm not asking you for a, a dime, you're not gonna have to pay one cent and you're gonna be able to utilize the whole asphalt road. But I need to be able to pay for it and it's extremely expensive.
I, I understand, Mark, but this, this is what you're trying to propose, that this is such a better option of I, I should be happy with this paved road. But I'm not paved. Up to a hundred and eighty feet to, to my property, so then I'm gonna go from a paved road to, to a gravel, to a dirt road.
Isn't that better than what we have now, we don't have any asphalt now?
I, 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 Mark, I, I think, I, Mark and Mark, we have too many Marks here, I, 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 I think we understand your, your reservations, ma'am. Ultimately, it's, it is gonna be up to the board. As to how the property gets developed, I mean, his, his original proposal with retreat lots basically. Puts in a common gravel driveway to service three lots and. You still have, you still have an additional three lots over and above what you've got now. If, if this subdivision plan that he's proposing gets done, he gets, instead of three additional lots, he gets four additional lots. But it paves at, I would say, close to more than three-quarters of the whole length. So it, it's, that, that's really the, the thing that we're talking about here. If, if you and Mark Francois wanna get together and, and, and come to an arrangement on that last section of roadway. I mean, that, that would be great, but it's, right now, what he's proposing. He is entitled to subdivide his land under the state zoning enabling act, so we have to take that into consideration. Along with his existing proposal or existing plan that allows him to build four lots back there without doing any paved road. That's, that's what the board has got to consider, to consider. Obviously, we would, we would prefer if you and Mark Francois can get together and come up with an, an arrangement that's amicable to both of you. But that's the, that's the decision in front of the board right now.
May I, Rick? Last, last month, just to maybe clarify, last month, we had put out a proposal for six lots and I was gonna asphalt the entire way. One of those lots got taken away and now I'm down to five lots, so to save on some of the expense.
Mark, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, it, it. We can't look at who pays for what, that's not what we're going here at the planning board level. Okay, we have, we have to look at your proposal and, and whether it is a reasonable proposal for that particular parcel of land. That's, that's it, I, I don't think that, what I hear going on tonight, I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, other than we, we. Got the concerns of, of. The couple that have the house up at the end of Trips Way, we've got a list of your concerns. And, and we've gotta go from there.
We have all these, you sent us, David, all the projections that you have on screen, correct?
Yes, I did.
The package you sent us?
Yes, I made sure that each of you received a copy of that, yes.
We each do, I think what we're gonna have to do on this is sit down together. And figure out which way we'd like to go. I make a motion that, uh, well, I will make a suggestion, I can't make the motion, the boys have to make the motion. That we look at all three of these. And go from there, maybe Mark and the young lady can get together and work something out, we can get together. I don't know how you feel, guys on the board.
I would like, I would like a little time to look at the three different proposals myself. You know, I, I always hate to be in a position to, to tell somebody what they've got to live with, you know, I, but on the other hand. I've, I've gotta look at it as what is a reasonable. Use or development of the land considering. The, the wet, the, the Wetlands Protection Act, the Zoning Protection Act and, and what we've done in other locations. I, I'd like, I'd like a little time to mull it over and maybe talk to the other members of the board, once I've had a chance to drive up. Up and back a couple of times and, and think about it, so that's my own opinion.
Put that into a motion?
That's a good, that, that would be difficult, I think, I, I would make a motion that we continue. The meeting. To our next, our next meeting and, and that the board look at the three proposals in a little closer. In a little closer detail. That would be.
Is there a second there?
All in favor, Rick?
Aye.
Brian, Mark, aye, we will do that, we will put you on the schedule for eight PM on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
You mean April, sir, right?
April, yes, don't mind me. April, yes. Don't mind me. I'm, it's past my bedtime.
Okay.
Now, is there anybody else other than the young lady speaking that would like to speak on this? No lawyers, no nothing? Okay, we're doing great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, folks, and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, welcome. Have a great night. With that, hopefully the last.
Please.
5:40, uh, Main Street, Solar Ray. They are just bringing in a, are you guys there? Solar Ray for 5:40 on Main Street?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, Asa Smith is here.
Yep, just bring in your proposal, please, Asa.
Yep, so we're proposing, my name's Asa Smith, working for Atlantic Design Engineers, who's representing the applicant, TJA Clean Energy, for a proposed 13 acre solar project on a portion of the property addressed as 540R, uh, Main Street. And pretty much we're, we've gone in front of the conservation commission and recently got a determination of applicability on March 9th, indicating that the minimal proposed work within the 100 foot buffer zone will not require notice and intent filing. We're currently working with the Mass Wildlife Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Office on a creation of a conservation restriction area for the onsite mapped endangered species. The eastern box turtle through the MESA program. And the access for construction future maintenance or future maintenance will be via the existing paved driveway off of Main Street, which gravel access drive will be constructed. The proposed project will maintain vegetative buffers to the south and east. In a row of dense evergreen plantings will be provided to screen the array from abutting properties to the northwest. A seven foot chain link security fence along these properties will have green vinyl slats installed to provide further screening. Atlantic looks forward to continuing this discussion during the next scheduled public hearing.
Fantastic. We will have you on at 8:15 on April 22nd, 5:40, uh, Main. I know you guys had sent out on your butters list premature. We have to put this in the paper for two weeks. You understand that, Asa?
Yep, and I can work with Jen first on that as well.
Yep, that's fine. And if you need any consulting, you can go directly to SW Cole and you can pay them direct. Is that okay?
Uh, yes, and I actually did speak with, um, Mr. Mello, I guess yesterday, and he just needs an official notification from you guys to give him the go ahead to start this work.
Okeydoke. Long, long as you understand that you two, you have to pay him, correct?
Yep, understood.
Okay. Gentlemen on the board, anything?
All set.
With that, we will set a public hearing for this for 8:15, 5:40, uh, Main Street. Jen, you got all that? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Do we have anything else? I think we did the minutes. We did the mail. We did everything with projects. We're doing good. It's 10 o'clock, time and a half after eight. Is there a motion?
How many do you want?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor? Rick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
We are done. Thank you very much, guys, for your time and consideration. Thank you, Pat, for sitting through this. Uh, thank you, Acushnet Cable, guys, for maintaining sanity through this whole array today. We'll see you next month.